Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Do we have Bruce Snavely here? Hi, come on up. He's going to deliver the invocation.
All right. Join me in prayer, please. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you tonight for this gathering. We thank you for government, and we thank you that government has been sanctioned by God Himself for the order of society and for the common good. And Lord, we would pray tonight for this meeting that you would add your blessing to these commissioners, give them wisdom, direction, discernment as they apply the law and the codes to the particular issues at hand this evening. We ask that you will keep order and a spirit of unanimity among both the citizenry and this fine board, and we pray that order will abound in this time tonight. And Father, we thank you that you've given us this opportunity to meet together. And once again, we pray for your blessing, and we would ask that in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Dr. Snavely?
Yes.
Can you just tell us who you're with?
I'm with Global Baptist Training Foundation. We train national pastors around the world. They either can't get education or can't pay for it. Usually, it's both.
Well, thank you so much for coming and delivering.
It's my pleasure. I wish you a good meeting.
Thank you. All right. And with that, we'll call this meeting to order. All right. Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, ma'am. Join us in the pledge.
In the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have no minutes for approval. Item E. E1. Whose item is E1?
Mine, Madam Chair.
Mr. Tobias?
Thank you. At your behest, I would you mind me reading the resolution?
Please.
Thank you. It's a resolution for Mr. Darling. Apparently, there's a lot of folks here to see you. And it's wonderful that your family's here. I heard that, so I had to tone down the resolution from its first draft. But it's up here. You can follow along. Whereas Mr. Stephen Darling has been dedicated employee of Brevard County for years, having quickly moved up to purchasing manager to director of central services. And whereas Mr. Darling's team quickly procured all the personal protective equipment for the county and coordinated with emergency management in managing the distribution warehouse during the unprecedented COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Mr. Darling's extensive experience in contract negotiations and project management has been invaluable asset to Brevard County, whereas his honorable service in the United States Air Force and the Air Force Reserve is very much respected and admired, whereas Mr. Darling strongly supports his community, volunteering much of his time to the MIMS Little League. And this is where I started writing. Whereas Mr. Darling is a proud resident of MIMS despite its low fluoride content. And whereas Mr. Darling is unfortunately a Florida State fan, which makes him lose a fair amount of his credibility. And whereas Mr. Darling will be missed as he's chosen to end his career with Brevard County to work. And there is a strike through up here. I initially put SpaceX, the greatest rocket company in the world. I had to strike through that and put Blue Origin, a rocket company that only needed $8 million from Brevard County residents.
Mr. Tobias.
I made a mistake. I corrected it. Now therefore be resolved that Brevard County Board of County Commissioners hereby recognizes and thanks Steve Darling for his outstanding service and his hard work ethic and wishes him luck in securing a vintage yellow Porsche. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this eighth day of February 2022. Madam Chair, with your permission, like a vote on this one.
I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias, second by Commissioner Lober. And we'll vote on this. But I have to say, my first experience with Steve, and maybe he knows where I'm going to go with this, is in the EOC. We were a couple of days in the EOC, and he was funny. We won't talk about how you encouraged me to take a selfie with the sleeping commissioner, but that was fun. We had a great time, and I appreciate your friendship, and I appreciate how you kept the team, helped keep the team rallied. So, thank you. And it's a great loss to us, but we wish you the best. Commissioner Pritchett?
Mr. Darling, we've all gotten very attached to you. You've done a great job, and we're really going to miss you. And Commissioner Tobias, that would have been a newspaper reporter. That would have hit national headlines, sir.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. I'll just chime in and say, yes, you're going to be missed, but our loss is their gain. And they're going to, you're going to appreciate them, and they're going to appreciate you. It's a great company to work for.
All right. And with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. You have anything you want to say?
Thank you for the opportunity. It's a much different perspective being down here as opposed to in the box. But I thank you all for your confidence. I thank the county manager for challenging me and giving me the opportunities. And I want to thank my 27 employees in central services, who I think are some of the best the county has to offer. So, I thank you all, and I will certainly miss it here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Anybody want to pull anything? I have Commissioner Lober's request for our consent agenda. Commissioner Lober, do you want to make a motion minus those two?
Just F2 and F5. So, I'll go ahead and move to approve consent less F2 and F5.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lober.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Lober?
As to F2, I'm OK with 2/3 of what's being proposed by staff. I'm not OK with 1/3 of it. I would be a lot more comfortable going ahead with staff's recommendations, 1 and 3. But as far as item 2, which authorizes HHS to accept on behalf of the commission all future settlements, I really would like them to come back to the commission in the future for our consideration. So, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve this item, less the second of the three requests in there. So, I would be approving 1 and 3, but not 2.
OK. Ian, do you want to explain the situation where item 2 would mainly be applicable?
Yes, Commissioner. We added that, or I should say, I added that to the agenda item because we're not sure how many settlement agreements are going to be coming. We're trying to be efficient moving forward. The language is substantially the same between all of those items. They come to us from the state. We don't have much opportunity to change those, and we are looking at being able to approve those or have me sign those based on outside council approval, county attorney, risk management, and the county manager. And again, just trying to be more efficient. But obviously, whatever the board decides is what we will do.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I raised the same question in my briefing, and I get the same answer, and it satisfied me. It just allows them to be more efficient, and if there is an issue, we'll still be aware of it. So, I don't see any reason not to do it.
Any further input? Did you hit your button, Commissioner Tobias?
No.
OK. All right. Well, I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lober to approve items 1 and 3. Do I have a second? All right. Motion fails for lack of a second. I'll entertain another motion if Commissioner decides.
Make a motion to approve.
As it stands?
As it stands.
OK. Motion by Commissioner Smith? Second by Commissioner Pritchett? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 4-1 with Commissioner Lober in the dissent. All right. Item F5? Commissioner Lober?
OK, this one will be quick and easy. Part of me wanted to pull this to make Kathy a little nervous. Is she in here? Oh, there she is. Yeah, you've got nothing to worry about. Just as Commissioner Tobias finished his resolution with Mr. Darling, I didn't want to wait until the other end of the career to say that I think you've done a wonderful job thus far. I know that you're moving into a different role within the county, but I don't think that there's a better person that we could have picked internally or externally. The only negative that comes along with this that would cause me to even question whether or not to vote in the affirmative is that this may break Frank's heart. So, my condolences will go out to Frank, but I think this is an excellent item, and I'll go ahead with that and move to approve F5.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lober, a second by Commissioner Smith. And congratulations, Kathy. I think it's amazing. It's the first time I've ever written a smiley face on my agenda, and it was next to your name. So, I'm really excited. I'm more excited that you're probably going to stay with us for a while, so that excites me. All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Moving on to public comments. I have two cards. Mr. Nathan Schlesser? Slusher, sorry.
Good afternoon. My name is Nathan Slusher. Tonight, I am here as the Chair of the Libertarian Party of Brevard County. As of February 4, 2022, we received notice of a SpaceX request to build a wastewater management facility in District 1. This permit request has been published by the Department of Environmental Protection. The proposed permit says the facility is planning to release 3,600 gallons per day or 0.003 million gallons a day of non-processed wastewater into Oyster Prong. Oyster Prong is a bay in a canal located just north of State Road 405 on Merritt Island. The bay connects directly to the North Indian River, directly across from the city of Titusville. The public notice informs that if the Department of Environmental Protection does not receive sufficient requests for a public hearing, the permit will be given immediately. All requests must be made by March 5, 2022. Whereas, one of the top three pillars of Libertarian Party of Brevard is the protection and correction of the Indian River Lagoon. And whereas, another one of the top three pillars of the Libertarian Party of Brevard is an increase in government transparency within the borders of our county. And whereas the Indian River Lagoon is already in crisis, and the Brevard County government itself has expenditures prior to this facility being built, we hereby formally request Brevard County and the Board of County Commissioners just to send a letter and a formal request to have a public hearing to establish the seriousness of this proposed situation, the after effects, and to ensure that no harm comes to the Indian River Lagoon. We would also like to ask that your request for the public hearing be held here in Brevard County for our citizens with a presentation to the public about the construction and the scientific plans for this facility. Signed, dated. Thank you. Would you like me to give it, you or the clerks?
Thank you.
For the record?
Commissioner Lober?
I was just going to throw out there. I'm not going to make the motion at this point because obviously I'm 1 of 5. But if someone else is interested in that, I'm happy to go along in that direction and request the hearing.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, that's the first I've heard about it, and I just asked Carol. So, I'm going to start some research tomorrow and find out what it is first. And then, Mr. Slusher, I will get back with you.
It's scary. I normally don't agree with them.
Ms. Loretta Dozier? I was going to say lovely, but I didn't want to sound biased.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening to the board. My name is Loretta Dozier. My address is 990 Hammacher Avenue, Palm Bay, Florida 32908. And I am here just to say thank you. Thank you for your service to our county. Thank you for all of the meetings that you attend, over 70-plus meetings, commissioner meetings. And I just want to say thank you and just bless you tonight, and may God give you wisdom and direction as you make decisions that will be best for our county. So, God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Promise I did not tell her to say that. Sandra Sullivan?
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores, and happy day on this cooler day. I would like to talk about the Indian River Lagoon. I expressed the last meeting some concerns, and this was this last week. FWC counted 127 manatees in a drainage ditch and in Berkeley Canal. That canal, that ditch is sprayed, and that goes directly out to the lagoon. This is FWC that was there when they were counting the manatees. This is an article that came out in TC Palm this last week where Orca did testing in St. Lucy, on the St. Lucy River, and found elevated levels of herbicides and copper. Copper is a biocide that kills seagrass. In another report I read this week, Florida DEP had identified in 2009 that nutrient loading was resulting in the decline of seagrass, but revised that in 2011 stating that there were other pollutants that were resulting in the decline of seagrass. That was 2011. The Save the Lagoon Plan started in 2016, and is entirely based on the premise that nutrient loading is causing the decline of seagrass. So, we need to adjust the plan. Obviously, in the last year with 1,101 manatees dying, we have a problem in the lagoon. The seagrass is the indicator species indicating the health of the lagoon. So, when we have lost nearly 80% of the seagrass in the lagoon, and it continues to decline, we need to adjust our plan. The science, there's lots of science out there that talks about the copper and the herbicides impacting the lagoon. PS2 herbicides impact the decline of seagrass. So, I would like some changes made to the Save the Lagoon Plan before you approve it at the next meeting. And that brings me to last year when we approached the BOCC meeting and requested some changes last year, and we were told, well, we should have given them direction before it came to the BOCC meeting. So, I've requested some commissioners to do that. One of the responses I got back is, we can't do that. It has to come to the board, and it has to be the board making that decision. So, I would ask you, when it does come to the board, that we make some significant changes to the Save the Lagoon Plan while we still can turn it around. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regarding Mr. Slusher's request, I have no objection to that. I think it's a great idea. But I do want you to know that I spent, and I'm sure several other commissioners probably spent time trying to find out the source of what was going on at the Cape this last week. And what I was told was what was dumped at KFC was KSC, not FC. KSC was non-processed industrial wastewater from the cooling towers at Kennedy Space Center. At times, contractors perform maintenance and are allowed to dump their closed-loop system into the sanitary system. But before they do that, they're required to take samples before the discharge. So, we are looking into it. We have seen it. We were asked about it. We're on top of it, but that doesn't mean that we're not willing to do more. Thank you for bringing it up also.
Hope I get this right. Ron Jurgatus? Oh, he's smiling, so I didn't get it right.
Don't make assumptions. Ron Jurgatus. Due to COVID, I'd like my minutes not started yet. Shouldn't this microphone be cleaned before somebody speaks so I don't catch COVID?
I mean, I could say the same about you not wearing a mask and not social distancing as well. I mean, do we have something to clean it for the gentleman?
I'll take my chances right now.
Or you could put your mask on if you feel more comfortable.
Well, I don't, can you hear me?
Yes. And even better if you're closer to the microphone a little bit.
All right. Very good. Even though this is not the correct mask yet. All right. I'm here tonight in Citizens Commons because I am concerned about all the dredging that took place in the Satellite Beach area south of Pinata Crossings. And we know we have an issue here that we've been working with the Air Force base, and I know you guys have been working with them diligently. My question is, since we've had this issue of dredging, and it's going out to a ranch, has that, all that stuff that has been dredged out supposedly cleaned, has that been tested for the forever chemicals? And the reason I bring this up is because I'm looking at land up in Michigan and other areas, and they're discovering that cattle are having higher levels of the forever chemicals, including Maine. Not only Michigan is having that, and then we have an aquifer out there. Is the county doing something to ensure that we are not going to dump forever chemicals into that cattle ranch area? And who's going to be liable for it over the long term? Obviously, we know that it may not be addressed properly, but can we take, please, a proactive approach towards that? We got the St. John's River over there. We've got other things there. And do we really want to infect cattle that could end up in human consumption? Is it tested along the way to ensure that those chemicals are not there? Because on that area where it was dredged, it's not far or even close to where all the dumping happened back in the day that nobody thought about. I'm asking the commission to look into this and ensure that we are not going to infect people with this. I think it's a very important subject to tackle it now in light of everything that's going on economically because it may become unfeasible financially to even consider this based on the economy right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Ron? I want to thank you for being here, and thank you for bringing that up. I have visited that site where they do the dredging and witnessed their testing, but I will double down and follow up and make sure that the testing includes PFAS and PFOS and whatever else. I believe it was, but it's probably been six or eight months ago since I was there the last time, and I've slept a few times since then. So, I may not remember everything that he said, but I will check into it.
Thank you very much. And I hope the rest of the commission looks into this, to other areas that is going on also. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's all I have for public comments. So, moving on to public hearings, item H1.
Good evening. Item H1 is the approval for the rate resolution of the Barefoot Bay Water and Sewer District. Just a briefing, the attachments included are the rate resolution, the memorandum of justification, along with additional support items as it relates to this item. If there are any questions, I'm available.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Barefoot Bay falls squarely in the district that I represent. I spent a little bit of time with this one. The history of the district is unique by all accounts. This was a failing utility when the county took it over 22 years ago. It was 40 years old at the time, so we're talking about a utility that is somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 years old. We went into the minutes, and we found that at the behest of the Barefoot Bay Water and Sewer Governing Board and Barefoot Bay residents, the county took out a loan to the tune of $17 million to purchase an inadequately maintained and a deteriorating utility, along with additional funding to actually rehabilitate it. Those loans will continue till 2029, well after the life cycle of this system. The commissioners at the time that, by all accounts, made this vote, poor vote, were Truman Scarborough, Randy O'Brien, Nancy Higgs, Sue Carlton, and Helen Volz. It was a 5-0 vote, and by the way, that bond has a prepayment penalty, so we don't even. so we don't even have the ability to pay it off at, earlier. During the vote, the final transfer, Vice Chairman O'Brien of the Barefoot Bay Water and Sewer Governing Board made it clear that the board did not promise the citizens of Barefoot Bay a rollback rate. Additionally, he said if rates were reduced back to their November rate, in two years, the board would have to hit Barefoot Bay again with higher increases than were anticipated, plus nothing was being put aside for maintenance of the system. Vice Chairman O'Brien also stated that he wanted to see a progressive rate schedule that would begin immediately. It really did not. The people of the district at the time understood their rates would be higher because of this situation. Increases were anticipated and should have been projected per the meeting minutes in 1999. A thought would be that you roll the Barefoot Bay system into the county system, and while it sounds good, it is completely unfair to the rest of the residents of, of that system to fold a high rate into a much lower rate. So given the history of the failing water system, the crushing $17 million bond, which again, we cannot pay off before 2029, and quite frankly, past boards, poor fiscal decisions, I don't feel I have any responsible choice other than to approve the rate resolution as it is necessary under the unfortunate circumstances that we were handed.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? So I have a motion by Commissioner Tavaia, a second by Commissioner Lober, and I have no cards. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Item H2?
Madam Chair, item H2 is the approval of the rate resolution for the utility services countywide system and the San Sebastian system. Again, in the agenda packet was the memorandum of rationale for the need for the rates, along with supporting documents.
Okay, I have a bunch of cards. Jim Glass? And after Jim, it'll be Kathleen Short.
Good to see you, Jim.
Good evening. I'm Jim Glass, and I live in Melbourne, Florida. I'm a member of the Florida Fly Fishing Association. You should have received the letter from us about our support for this increase. I'm a civil engineer, retired civil engineer, and have managed the design and construction of many water and wastewater projects in the Tampa Bay area and in the Florida Keys. Utility agencies have a difficult time funding repairs, upgrades, and adding capacity to their systems. When I was working, grants were available from EPA to fund 50% of the cost of certain wastewater projects. Those grants are no longer available. So the cost of improving systems lies with the rates that you charge for the customers. I've attended many of our Save the Lagoon meetings. At one of these meetings, I asked Dr. Windsor, the chairman, why aren't projects included in the plan to repair these oil force mains, pump stations, and sewer lines? He said that the committee does not include these projects because they feel it's up to the utility system to pay for those costs, or existing customers should afford to pay that. So I would sum up this. The $460 million that you're going to raise from the increased rates and the sales tax plan that has been approved is raising about $480 million worth of improvements to the lagoon. I don't believe that that's nearly enough to fund the improvements to the lagoon. It needs to be in the order of $2 billion. As an example, the Florida Keys hooked up every waste, every septic tank, 20,000 of them, to a central sewer system at a cost of over $1 billion. We have 50,000 septic tanks in the lagoon watershed that eventually is going to have to be hooked up to a collection system or a better, or better systems are going to have to be provided for those. So I'd encourage you to take that into consideration when you vote on this rate increase. It's really necessary. We have a big problem with the lagoon, and I hope that this funding and the utility system will be able to make the repairs necessary to help the lagoon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathleen Short? And after Kathleen, Colleen Lawley?
Thank you for giving me the time to talk to you. My name is Kathleen Short. I live at 3848 15th Street in Miko, which is San Sebastian subdivision. We pay our water bill to Barefoot Bay Utilities. We do not receive water from the treatment center there. We have no filtered water coming in. We pay the same rate, yet we have no filtration. When we complain, the only thing they can do is open up the fire hydrants and flush out the system. I've been to the emergency room once. My niece has been to the emergency room once. We have two special need kids in our household that both have GI problems. We can't use our water. Today, we get notice that they are going to be putting large amounts of chlorine in the water to kill off the bacteria. Great, maybe we won't end up in the hospital now. But they're suggesting that we run our water until it comes clear why they are chlorinating the system to kill the bacteria. You can't even go in my bathtub, fill the bathtub, and see your feet. I have a softener system. I've done everything possible to make the water coming into my house so that it can be used. It can't be used. If I pay the same rate that they do up in Barefoot Bay for my water, why don't I have a filtration system? Nobody in San Sebastian has it. And it's, it's really causing health problems. And I feel bad for the workers. When we call and we ask them to do something about it, they come knocking at the door and say, I'm really sorry, the only thing we can do is to open up the fire hydrants. Now, with the chlorine going in, I have to run my water. The instructions they gave me were to run the water until it comes clear. Who's going to pay for that? Me. My wash, my washing machine, I'll have to run it until it comes clear, then empty it before I can put my clothes in. Okay? I already buy bottled water. We cook with bottled water. We drink bottled water. Now I can't even use the water for cleaning. I'm a citizen of Brevard County. I pay my taxes, and I feel that I should have the same rights as everybody else. Mr. Tavaia, I'm in your area. Okay? I've called up to Titus Vell to the utility, I can't even remember his name up there. I get no action. This has been going on for several years. As it is now in the area that I live, if you have a well and you have to, you're, you're not going to be given a new well to drill for residential. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. And after Colleen, we'll have Ronald Reed?
Good evening. I as well live in the Miko area and have been going through the same situation. The two children she just mentioned are mine. We did live in Barefoot Bay, was receiving the same issues, so we moved to Miko. It's not easy when you can't even bathe your own children. I have to take them to a different house just to get them treated because they are, as she said, special needs. I can't take the risk of them putting their head in the water. I'm not going to put my kids' life on the line because of bad filtration. The last time the gentleman came out, his exact words were, I'm sorry, but there's not enough people in this area on our water line for us to be able to treat you properly. That's not called for. If I have to move out of my area to take better care of my kids just for water, I will. It's not proper. I pay my taxes. I pay my bills, just like everybody up there. We should be treated the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Ronald Reed?
My name is Ronald Reed. I live in Melbourne. I'm in the fly fishing group with Jim Glass. I was educated as a physicist, but I never practiced physics. I took advantage of my background, however, and was very successful as a businessman. But now I'd like to talk to you about this rate increase for the Brevard Utilities. The amount of the increase is about 6.5%. That's roughly the number we're seeing from the inflation boys in Washington, and I guarantee you it's going to be around a while. So this is, 6.5% is not an unreasonable amount of money. We have to remember that the problems with the Indian River is us. We cause the problems. We're the reason, we're the root cause. The problems are there. It's our waste that causes the pollution that kills the fish. It comes from our sewage. For example, the septic tanks which discharge untreated nutrients into groundwater that seeps into the lagoon. This is, I mean, and it keeps going on. I lived in an area once when I was growing up as a child where they had a similar problem worried about polio. You know what they did? They passed a law, nobody could use a septic tank. Cut them all off. You had to use a conventional system. So, and our old sewage infrastructure causes discharge of untreated nutrients and nutrient-rich, affluent into the lagoon. The lagoon is a very serious problem, and we've seen this over and over and over again. Actually, I've gone to some of these meetings of the Lagoon Society. I can't stand them. I went and I get sick, frankly. But, and oh, by the way, you can't get COVID from any solid surface. That's a scientific fact, in case anybody worries about it. So we caused, we caused the-
I was actually more concerned about him touching the podium with his hands on the podium because that, you can transfer, but yeah, I get it.
You can, any solid surface cannot transfer COVID. I read the study. I read a lot of studies. I'm a medical type, so.
You can. It can.
Well, you're reading the wrong studies then, ma'am. So it caused the, we caused the problem. We have to be the solution. It's the only way to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan?
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. The concern I have with this item is the number of increases that we are having. I attended the last budget review meeting, and they had anticipated in this meeting an increase in solid waste. So I was looking for that and saw this instead, so I guess it wouldn't be good form to put two increases on the same agenda. So I want to talk about this item a little bit. Obviously, we need to address infrastructure. It's the number one concern for the lagoon, as has been brought up. But I also wanted to bring up about the ARPA funds. So I want to hand this out in a couple minutes. This is a screenshot from the ARPA designated uses for the ARPA funds, and it's very limited in what you can use it for, and D is for water sewage and broadband infrastructure. So it's intended for assistance to, you know, residents, housing assistance for workers impacted and health emergency, and to investments in water sewage and broadband. So my question is, with all of the inflationary increases that we're seeing, 39% in garbage with 3% thereafter, and a 33% fire assessment, and this averages to be 7.9% each year for five years with a 3% thereafter, and another solid waste increase coming based on the anticipated plant costs increasing from $25 million to $40 million, why can't we put the $50 million or a portion of the $50 million ARPA funds towards the offset of this cost and limit this to a CPI increase? So that would be my question. I also want to comment on the PFOS and other contamination coming from the dredging. Oh, it says, Patrick Shores. I personally met with the director, Aaron Watkins, from DEP in Randy Fine, Representative Randy Fine's office, and pleaded with him to test that DMAA material for PFOS. I was not successful in that regard. I was successful in getting more interstellar cleanup of the dredge material water before going back into the lagoon. You'll see a mountain of sand where they take the arsenic, which is twice the commercial cleanup target, and mend it with sand to get it down to that cleanup target. Arsenic feeds algae. So it is costing more and more money to treat our water, our drinking water, because that ranch is just south of our drinking water source. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Jurgutis?
You think you got it right that time?
What's that? I did. I made sure. I wrote it down phonetically correct.
This reminds me of a movie. We Got Trouble in Riverside. The Music Man movie. I'm sure some people remember it, maybe some don't. The past is spilled milk. It's sour. In certain countries, they treat the milk that's sour milk where it's drinkable and it's a delicacy. But we've got a problem here. My first question is going to be this. One, during the last 10 years, how much money, and this is a yes and no question, and your staff's going to look at this, how much money, and I was told that this was an enterprise fund during one of the meetings that I attended, how much money has been transferred or put back into the utilities for wastewater to or from the regular operations or to any other entity within the county? And I think that should be answered based on the increase, not me to do the research, even though I will. It should be done by your staffs. And then we have rate increases here that are phenomenal. Has anybody done the research, and I know you did, you used a consulting firm, has anybody done the research with the Public Service Commission? Just a thought, to see what the CPIU they're using as far as rate increases. And can we all agree, is the fourth issue, can we all agree that wastewater consumption and rates are based on water usage? If that is the case, then what the comments I heard here are some of the issues that if they got to drain and clean their pipes out, that goes against the rates. The amount of money that's going to be spent here, surely there is a way to do this. And by the way, I know we need to clean up the lagoon, but I dealt with the Keys during my profession as far as turning it into, taking it out of how they did it the archaic way and how they did it with these plunge, plunge pipes down there.
Thank you.
Can I finish my thought or not?
No, I'm sorry. Everybody's got to be treated fairly. We do three minutes.
Well, I guess I'm going to have to write a letter for insight to you. I apologize that I'm not being serious.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Lober?
Bear with me here. There are quite a few things I want to get across. First, as to what we just heard, we're not in the Keys. The Keys, among other things, have tidal changes. We have wind. We don't really have much of a tide to speak of. We have wind. We don't really have much of a tide to speak of, hence the reason that folks have proposed, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but hence the reason that folks have proposed essentially cutting in an inlet. What worked there may or may not work here to some degree. Really, the question, there's some questions that I think we ought to consider, one of which is, do we really want, and it truly is Apollo-era infrastructure, to release untreated effluent into the lagoon? Do we want that? I mean, do you want human feces in the lagoon? That's the question. None of us sitting up here and none of the folks sitting in the box that staff's sitting in over there, none of us make anything on account of raising or lowering utility rates. As we've heard, and it sounded like there may be some conspiracy theory floating around, utilities is run as an enterprise fund, just like waste collection is. It's an enterprise fund within the county. Money doesn't go from utilities to public works. Money doesn't go from utilities to law enforcement. Money doesn't go from utilities to IT or to the county attorney's office. It stays in utilities. The money that's raised through any rate change or the money that's lost through a rate reduction stays in that utility. The money that's raised is used to maintain the utility and to improve the utility. That's it. It's not horribly complicated. As Jim Glass has said, and I'm familiar with Mr. Glass, the retired engineer that I think was the first or second up, the amount that's proposed even with this alone isn't remotely enough to resolve the problem in its entirety, but it is enough to at least lessen the likelihood that we're going to have some spills in the very near term and perhaps in the intermediate term, and to potentially address some of those most leak and break-prone portions of our sewer system, whether it be lift stations, forced mains, or otherwise. The rate that's being proposed, and I've talked with staff about this, is the lowest potentially sustainable rate. I didn't even say sustainable rate, the lowest potentially sustainable rate that was proposed by the consultant. And to that end, you know, we've split up with CARES Act, and we've split up with ARPA to a degree, some of the money that has come into the county. My plan with the D2 ARPA funds is to spend the lion's share, substantially all of it perhaps, fixing lift stations and forced mains within Marid Island, simply because it's surrounded by water. It's essentially a peninsula, barrier island. These are things that are decades beyond, in many instances, their life expectancy. If they're supposed to last 25 or 30 years, and they are 60-plus years old, we don't have to have Mr. Glass's engineering credentials, which I certainly respect and appreciate, to realize it's not exactly a good situation to be in. We're sitting on a time bomb in some senses. If we don't have the money to maintain the system, if we fail at doing so, we will have sewage leaks. It's an inevitability. It will happen. We'll end up at that point in time with Florida DEP telling us that we're fined, and more than likely, we'll have a consent judgment where we're going to be forced to spend perhaps an even larger fortune fixing a problem, with the only difference being that we will have delayed fixing it, and we'll have human feces, we'll have urine, we'll have pharmaceuticals, and whatever else people put down the toilet or down their sink. That's moronic. If you think that MRSA is good, or you want fecal coliform bacteria in the toilet, you want, let's say, pharmaceuticals in the lagoon, because don't kid yourself, people flush their pharmaceuticals in the toilet. They don't always go to the trash or take them back to a pharmacy. A lot of pharmacies won't even take them. Guess where it ends up? Yesterday, I was at the North Marid Island HOA meeting that was actually a little bit north of my office, off a tropical trail, and they had a fellow named Ken who was with Marine Resource Council, and he was talking about, among other things, an acquaintance or a friend of his who had contracted MRSA, and by all evidence, it appears he contracted it while swimming in the lagoon. I don't necessarily disagree with that. I don't, I don't think he's necessarily wrong with that, but the fact that I even have to wonder whether that's where he got it from, because we know where sewage leaks end up, it makes this an easy decision for me. In 2018, I ran on basically three things: public safety, infrastructure, and lagoon restoration. Those were the three things. Anyone wants to go and fact-check me, go, you know, go to do a time-limited search on Google or otherwise. This is all three. We've got public safety based on God knows what kind of effluent is being put in the system, making it out to the lagoon. We've got infrastructure for obvious reasons, and we have the lagoon for even more obvious reasons. And the last thing I'll mention as to what Jim said, and I think it, and I apologize, Jim, I don't mean to be negative toward anything you've said, but I think it came across a little too defeatist, at least for my tolerance and my taste, about the Citizens Oversight Committee with SOARL not wanting to fund utility costs. You're right, Jim, but that's atrocious. It's not your doing, and it's not your fault. I don't think you've been on that side of the equation at all. Voters that supported this, this particular half-cent sales tax, the SOARL tax that was referenced by Mr. Glass, don't want to see that every little municipality or every big municipality gets their piece of the pie. They want the money spent where the greatest return on investment is, and to do otherwise is politicizing a process that has really no room for politics. So we need to focus that money when this comes up, really on targeting where the ROI is. And if someone up here wants to vote no to this, I encourage you, tell me why. Tell me what your alternative is. I would love to vote no if there's a good alternative that would allow me to do that, but don't just vote no because it's convenient without saying something. Please tell me how you can avoid doing this and avoid the leaks and avoid crap going into the lagoon. I live on the lagoon, I'll tell you, not just because I'm a nice guy and want to do what's best for my constituents, but out of selfishness, I don't want it going down the toilet, literally and figuratively, any more than it has. So if someone's got a better idea, please let me know.
All right. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for throwing the gauntlet, Commissioner Loeb. And you get a pass on this one when it comes to the rationale. I was going to, when I heard the way you were going to vote, I was going to vote quietly no. However, I think it's, I think it's very fair to go ahead and justify the no vote. And my no vote came on December 7th of last year, where this board made a determination that, quite frankly, they were not concerned about the actions of future boards. The commission voted 3-2 to encumber future boards with more than $1 million a year in transportation costs for maintaining railroads, which could have easily, easily been funded by Brightline, a private railroad company. Based on this, while I am clear on the implications, Commissioner Loeb could have gone on about Florida statute 403.086, particularly a section dealing with civil penalties of $500 for every 24-hour period of such failing, compliance order by the state, and enforced by DEP. It does not apply till December 31st of 2025. And as this board made the decision that they don't care about future boards, I too am going to make the same decision that this board made less than a couple months ago and vote no on this.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I wish we could all have an opinion without trying to slam each other for what we vote on in the past. I have full confidence that everybody up here, when we vote, we vote our hearts on what we believe is correct, and that's why I like serving with you guys. I'd like it better if you always would agree with me, but it barely rarely happens. But I just wanted to throw that out there. So I am going to support this, but I want to mention a couple things from a couple comments, just so everybody doesn't think that there's some incorrect information. Well, you're going to think that if we don't tell you. But as far as the ARPA funds, out of the ARPA funds we have that we were able to use, we use 75 percent of them. This commission used 75 percent of them to try to work on some of these projects. So the other percentage we used was other infrastructure things that we have problems with, bridges, roads, those types of items. So we've been very conscientious of these funds, and we've been trying to use them. So because we applied that to it, actually, the first year for this was going to be 9.5 percent increase, but because we applied some of these funds to help with some of these infrastructure problems, we felt like we couldn't wait on, we needed to get moving on. That first year is now 6.5. So, you know, we're all trying on this. But I do want to remind you guys of this, and somebody brought this up. These are for user fees, and this is really good, that when you use a product, you pay for a product. So when we do this, it's not an overall tax to the whole county, because I live in the city of Titusville, and our new bill after this in Brevard County is going to be 79.24. Titusville, I'm paying 89.94, and Cocoa, 92.83. So Brevard County is really low right now, and I think part of the problem is, is that we probably should have been doing some of these increases along the way, because we've got a little bit behind of some projects we needed to do. We did move some, I think, some funds that we had when I first got on commission over to help some emergency items that we had to do. So we've been trying to do this, but if we don't do some user fees increases, who's going to pay for this? So the people using the product really need to be the ones maintaining it. Mr. Fontaine is doing a great job of trying to keep costs down and being very responsible in these projects. I'm very proud of the county departments that are handling this. I've worked with them enough, and I have great respect for them. So I wanted to mention that. And the big problem, well, it's not a big problem, it's a very responsible thing, is the state set down a lot of new guidelines that we have to do now. We have no choice. And they're good things to do, and it's making us having to come up to the table and do these things, which are things that are problems we need to be dealing with. So we have to spend these capital funds now. We have to get started on them. So we're going to really have to do these items, but we have really been trying to do the best we can with keeping costs down. But again, if we're using the product and we have somebody very responsible trying to keep the costs down, and we've got a good plan with how we're growing in this, I feel pretty comfortable with it. So I'm really glad we were able to put some of the ARPA funds towards it to help keep these rates a little lower. But guys, Brevard County is still way under all of the municipalities on what they're charging, because they are having to do the same thing. And thank you, sir, for bringing up the inflation, because we might even be a little bit behind on the inflation numbers as we start building. I do not know, but thank you, guys, for your patience, and we're really trying here to deliver a good product to you.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've had some people here tonight that have raised some issues about how, and maybe even one, at least one commissioner, that has raised questions about how we voted. You have five commissioners because it's important to have different opinions and come together, discuss issues, and come to a rational decision. Sometimes you're on the no side, sometimes you're on the yes side, but that's what we are charged with. We are responsible to you guys for the health, welfare, and safety of the constituents in this county. That's our job. That's our job description. And each and every one of us takes that issue very, very seriously. So sometimes it'll lead us down one road and another commissioner down another road, but our goal is all the same. It's the health, safety, and the welfare of you folks. And just for one example, my ARPA funds, I spent, I think it was 2.6 million or 2.9 million of my ARPA funds to benefit, well, it was my district at the time, but it was soon to become District 2. And I did that because we had monies that were going to expire in a few short months, and if I didn't come up with that ARPA money, all the money that we could have used, and it was well over $1 million in some kind of a grant, it was going to, it was going to be lost forever. So that product, that project would not have occurred. So we have tough decisions to make. It's not just one issue. It's not just one subject. We have a lot of things that come across our desk that we're responsible to you for, and we have to use our best judgment. And sometimes it irritates you guys, and sometimes it irritates some of my fellow commissioners. But we're all doing our job here and doing it the best we can. And I really appreciate all you folks being here, because it's nice to know that you guys care.
Commissioner Loeb?
I'll just put out there real briefly, with respect to the Brightline item, I do agree with Commissioner Tobias on that 100 percent in terms of what his rationale was for opposing that. But that said, prior boards have put us here. I've spoken with staff, and frankly, I don't think staff has any level of comfort throwing prior boards under the bus in publicly noticed meetings. I don't think that's something that they enjoy doing. But the fact is, they have caused us to be in the situation where by delaying, there's a higher increase than you would have had if you had the need met as we went along with time. If we don't stop the cycle of essentially looking the other way, in addition to having leaks and to having the things that I mentioned earlier end up in the lagoon, and it's an inevitability, what you're going to see is that if it fails, you're going to have an even higher rate increase at some point in the future, because when you compress the amount of time that you have to fix the issue, you're increasing the cost that you have to make up over that time. So I don't, it's not that I want to either make a subsequent commission's job easier, or their life easier, or more difficult, or what have you. I don't want to strap them into having to have an even higher percentage increase. And we had people, frankly, that sat in seats here that had no spine at all, and they were so afraid of the repercussions perhaps, and I'm assuming that's the reason, they didn't do what was necessary to maintain the rates that are needed to maintain the system in a halfway reasonable fashion. That's why we're at where we're at. I don't want to continue that cycle of making the problem just kick down the road. So I'm still going to support it. I understand where Commissioner Tobias is coming from, but at some point, we've got to put that behind us and just move forward for what's best for the community and really what's sustainable for the utility.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I just want to say Robin Fisher and Jim Barfield would have done a little, and I'm kidding, in case you're listening. I just want to make a motion to approve it, Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Smith. And I think the only thing I'll add, because I think a lot of things have been said, is it's never popular to vote for increases, and it's easy just to say no. And it'd be easier for me right now to say, to give you a no vote as well, because the three votes are here, probably, I'm assuming. However, it's, it wouldn't be the right thing to do. And unfortunately, you know, rates weren't increased with the need. And, you know, for me, it's a really a simple, a simple reason, and that's, the state has put down mandates on us. If we start discharging into the lagoon, we're going to be fined. So you're going to pay those increases anyway, because we're not going to be able to pull that money out of thin air. So we're avoiding that. I think we're being responsible, and we have to keep up with our population growth and our capacity needs. So I'm going to support it. So with that, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 4-1 with John Tobias and the negative. Commissioner Tobias, sorry. That wasn't too painful, right, Eddie? I think I heard Eddie breathe for the first time after this. If people only understood, and I think maybe some do, the amount of time, work, briefings, meetings, planning, studies, like all the stuff that goes into it. But I appreciate what you're doing, and I'm excited for the utility. I think it's about time we do what's right. So thank you. Thank you for all your hard work.
Well, thank you for your support.
All right. Item H3?
Good evening, Commissioners. H3 is a petition to vacate 7215 Barronut Avenue, Ms. LaShir, District 1, properties located cocoa north of Fay Boulevard and east of Grissom Parkway, requesting vacating a portion of a 10-foot-wide public utility and drainage easement for the construction of a proposed pool. There are no issues.
All right. I have no cards. Commissioner Pritchett?
Make a motion to approve, ma'am.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
H4 is a petition to vacate 410 Artemis Boulevard, Diana Shores. It is Ms. Stamfield, District 2, properties located Marid Island, north of Highway 520 and east of State Road 3, requesting a vacating of 5-foot-wide public utility easement to allow for an existing covered deck to remain. The covered deck was built without a building permit by the current homeowner. The issue would correct a current code enforcement issue. Our building official has confirmed it was built to code. The adjacent neighbor is okay with the action. There is no issue with the utilities or drainage.
Okay. Commissioner Loeb?
Is it only the applicant as far as cards?
Yeah, there are no cards.
Okay. Do we have the applicants here? Okay. I, I'm not going to rip into you too much on this, and I just want to point out a few things. This is, this is kind of a double whammy in the sense that it was built with no permit, and it was built on a county easement. So in a sense, this was two wrongs. I will tell you, I'm going to approve it, but I want to make clear why I'm approving it. Your neighbor to your east that this structure abuts, I spoke with a gentleman, I believe it was on Friday or thereabouts this past week, and he was, he was okay with it. And then I had someone from Planning and Development, an inspector, go out and look at the structure to make sure that it was code compliant. And then he spoke with the lady that lives in that same structure, the house to the east, and they were both okay with it. So I don't know what their beverage of choice is, but really, you should, you should probably buy them a case of whatever beverage they'd like at that structure at 420, I think it is Artemis. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Commissioner Smith?
I have a question. And Commissioner Loeb, you might be able to answer it or one of staff?
I'll give it a shot.
Is there any penalty involved for this person? This, I mean, sometimes these occur because 20 years ago, somebody violated the code.
There was a code. There was a code enforcement case on this, but that was when anonymous complaints were still allowed prior to us being preempted by the state. So, I don't know what happened with the code enforcement case, but separate from the code enforcement case, no.
So, I just find it odd that we have, I don't know, we have a policy, it seems, that I want to do something I know I can't get a permit for, so I just go ahead and do it. And then if I get caught, I get what? Permission to say it's okay.
If you want to speak, could we have you come up? I'm sorry. Thanks. And Commissioner Smith, as she's coming down, I'll just mention again, if the, if the neighbor that was most directly affected by this had any issue, my vote would be no. But since they're okay with it, that really is the one and only reason I'm okay with it in this case.
If you could just state your name?
Sure. I'm Kele Stampaugh. And I took a picture off of Pinterest of what I was going to try to build, and I showed them the pre-existing little like grill and, you know, little thing that I bought from Lowe's that is on wheels and showed them the little thing that I was going to build over the top of it and said, "Do I need a permit for this?" And the lady who I spoke to, I just walked in the door, showed her a picture. She goes, "Oh, no, you don't need a permit for that." Only reason why I did it without a permit, because I was there to pull one if I needed one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I guess that answers my question, but I'm sure now my focus of displeasure focuses to county if somebody was to say something like that from the county. So, I don't, I don't need any confrontation. I'm just voicing my thoughts.
Maybe the initial structure had wheels and the actual structure did not because that would mean the difference between a permit, correct?
Commissioners, the requirement for a permit for, say, a shed or other facilities like that, sometimes they are exempt from permitting requirements. They're size dependent and structurally dependent on whether you have a poured foundation or plumbing or electrical. If it doesn't have those things, then they frequently are exempt from permitting. However, they're never exempt from permitting if it's going to be inside of the easement that's on, along the property boundary. And that's a function of where you put the structure. And so, I suspect that she was told that she was, didn't have to have a permit for it. It was based on a premise that wasn't actually in existence on that site, specific issue. So, the, yeah, much of what Commissioner Smith was describing actually does take place.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Denninghoff, can you make any of those determinations based on where it is in the easement based off a photograph from Pinterest?
Not normally.
Okay. Just checking. Thank you.
I'm getting worried now.
All right. Did you have a motion?
Yeah, I have a motion standing.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Lober. Can we get a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
It's a reluctant aye, I'll tell you that.
Motion passes unanimously. She seems like a pretty honest lady who just didn't know she was in the easement. Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot.
All right. Moving on to item H5.
Good evening, Commissioners. Item H5 is the fifth extension of the temporary moratorium for the new application of biosolids on lands within Brevard County. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Motion approved, D2.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lober, second by Commissioner Tobias, and I have one card. Ronald Gergudas, Gergudas, sorry.
Did he leave?
Did he leave?
I'm hearing yes from the guy.
Ron Gergudas? Okay. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Okay, item J1.
Good evening, Commissioners. Item J1 is item from the TDC, a recommendation to do a competitive solicitation for a consultation looking at the need, size, possible size, and possible location of a convention center in Brevard County.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Commissioner Lober asked before we vote no, give some reasons. So, I'm going to give four pretty clear reasons why I'll be voting no, and I hope at least two other people join me on this one. First, a max of $50,000 was asked, was allocated to this study. The Driftwood proposals came back at $60,000, $100,000, and $200,000. Why this is significant is because the Driftwood study was a much smaller scale study than this one would entail. That one had already determined the location, that had determined methods of financing and management, all questions that this proposal would need, and yet allocating less money. The second point, the fourth penny, penny from Tourism and Development Tax consists of roughly $3.4 million of annual budget. About $350,000 of that goes to USSA, and the remainder, roughly $3 million, is dedicated to advertising. As a result, any of the money spent from this study would be at the cost of tourist and development advertising budget. Number three, finally, the sheer amount of money for this convention center would force our hand and we would have to get somewhere in the neighborhood of, depending on the size and scope, a 20- to 30-year bond at substantial financial burden on taxpayers. Number four is, I think, the most scary, and I spoke with our director on this one. It's widely known that convention centers typically lose money. He cited the Orland, the Orange County covers part of its convention center deficit with funds that come out of the general fund. And this is a scary proposition. If Orlando is losing, then, and most other convention centers are losing, I certainly don't want to put ourselves in that position. So, it looks as though the outcome is not a positive one, and if it's not a positive one, I don't see allocating $50,000 to find out as such. So, for those four reasons, I'll be voting no on this.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I am not going to support this either, and I want to explain why. I'm on the TDC board now. They wanted to bring it forward, so I wanted us to be able to hear it because I didn't want to hinder something that you guys might need to hear. And again, the correlation with the Driftwood, and again, we haven't seen enough of that, but that one was paying for itself. This one's kind of on our dime. North Brevard, a while ago, we had some funding up there. We were going to do a, one of these kind of centers on a smaller scale, remember, where we're going to do the children's athletics. And it was a really good program. We were doing a public-private partnership. So, after we had this up, the majority of the cost was going to fall on Delaware North at the time, and they were going to completely try to program it. When we got the study back, this was a good thing to have to stir up tourism. So, it does provoke tourism if you have the right programs coming in, but the hard thing is finding someone that'll program it. But it did show that in the first three years, it does operate at a loss. And this was a smaller scale one. I think it was only $75,000 at the time. So, to do it right in the county, we'd have to almost structure it like Orlando, and it 'd have to be almost between 100 and 200,000 square feet. And I got a little cautious during the COVID time when they had to completely close down and try to cover the cost. So, I think that this, this would be a big expense on the county as far as a study on it. If you guys are up to wanting to do the study, but I've got a little heartburn over just because, just on the smaller scale that what we look at up there, I would love to see someone come in and bring something like this without any risk to the county in the future if there's any problems with something. I would love to see the tourism come up, increase in numbers, but I, I'm not going to support this.
Commissioner Lober?
A few thoughts. First, if I may, Peter, where did we come up with the $50,000 as far as being a reasonable number? Because I, I have a degree of flexibility. Tell me it's a million dollars, you're not going to get it. But if you tell me it's 60 or 70 instead of 50, if it's still something that's worthwhile to do, it's still something that's worthwhile to do. So, before I go any further, I was just hoping you might give me a little bit of info on where that number was.
I believe that was recommended by one of the, one of the commissioners on the, on the council. So, I, you know, I don't know what the exact rationale was, but that, I think there was, the number 25,000 was thrown out and then, and then 50,000. But I did share the previous, you know, study had generated RFPs for a higher amount.
Okay. I, I just want to be clear, and I know I've said this in prior meetings, I have always opposed, I'm adamantly opposed to using millage to build or to maintain a convention center. Anything that goes into either of those categories, building or maintenance, for me to have any intention or any, even to consider supporting it, it would have to come out of the tourist development tax. I don't remember the exact number, but it was something in the scheme. And Peter, if you know the number, please let me know. It was something like 98.7 or 99% of the TDT comes from tourists, which kind of makes sense if you think that most of us don't pay to stay in short-term overnight accommodations in the county that we live in. It just doesn't really happen. Last time I did it was probably 10 years ago and my AC broke. So, I, I think as far as what Commissioner Tobias mentioned with respect to convention centers being loss leaders, probably. It makes sense that they would lose money. But if they, in operating, lose money insofar as what's allocated to build, maintain, and operate them, if they still bring in more tourism dollars to the general area, if they're funded out of the tourist development tax and they increase the tourist development tax by more than what they lose, it's a net positive for the community. So, I'm not bothered that they may lose money in a direct sense if they bring in that money to offset those losses such that the TDT is increased by virtue of their being there. The only concern that I really had prior to this meeting, and now with the $50,000, I'll add that as a concern, was that the, the actual contemplation of the TDC insofar as what it was they wanted studied, that it'd be reflected in whatever we, we look at passing today. So, I understand that they had looked at a facility of a certain size, whether it's 150,000 square feet or whatever the magic number is. I would support if there were enough votes up here spending, and if you feel more comfortable with 75,000, Peter, I know that, you know, the time that I've been here, I've saved more than 75,000 questioning items that have been brought up here. I think that's a small amount to pay to have an answer as to a fundamental question that potentially involves tens or hundreds of millions of dollars over a period of many years. So, I would support that if someone wants to make a motion, if you think 75 is something that's, that's perhaps safer. I don't want to spend north of 100, but if that's a better number, I would support that. Again, conditioned on it reflecting the actual desire of the TDC to focus on that particular sized facility. So, I don't know where the others are at, but that's where I'm at.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, let me start by saying that I've been a proponent for bringing or building a convention center here for probably as long as I've been in office because I firmly believe that we're losing an awful lot of business because we don't have such. We're losing all that business to Orlando, and they may be losing money on the convention center itself. But I look at, as a business person, I look at the return on investment, ROI, and they have, I would think, hundreds of thousands of people that go through that convention center each and every year. All those families, all those people, they represent an awful lot of money into that community, Orlando, Orange County. They stay there, they shop there, they go to stores there, they go to the Mouse Place, they go to every, every other venue you can imagine. But that's the magnet. That brings them there. We don't have that magnet, whether it's 60,000 square feet or 100,000 square feet. And we would never compete with Orlando. And that's not what I'm proposing, and that's not what I'm suggesting. But what we would get from Orlando is an awful lot of the smaller conventions, say, for example, a basketball tournament, a cheerleading tournament. We could get gaming tournaments, and I understand those are huge, and I've talked to Peter about them. They are a huge draw. If we had a convention center, there are an awful lot of people around this country that would love to come to the Space Coast as opposed to going to see Mickey again. Space Coast is new to most people, and they would, it would be a natural draw for them. So, I think it would be hooves to find out for $50,000 what the credibility would be and what the, what the, what the advantages would be for us to have such a convention center, what conceivably, what size we could support, if we could even support one. I think it's worth the money to get the answers to those questions. And if the answers are positive, then I think we owe it to you guys to bring that additional business in here if we can. And if it would, if we could work it and figure out how to spend the money and come up with the money. But again, as Commissioner Lober said, the TDT, I have occasion when people will say, "Well, you know, that's my tax money." No, it's not. Unless you're spending an evening in a motel or hotel in this county, it's none of your money. That money strictly comes from the people, the bed taxes in those, those buildings and those hotels and those facilities. So, I support this. I think it's a good idea. I think it's something that, we owe it to ourselves, we owe it to you folks to find out what those answers are and what, and whether it would be to our advantage. So, I'll support it.
Well, I guess I'm the last one to make us make the decision. Right now, I am not in support of this, and it's not because I don't think we could benefit from a convention center, but if, honestly, if they were such moneymakers, someone would be asking us to build one now. What we saw before us was a hotel that wanted to build a, what they called a convention center, which was essentially just a large ballroom. So, it wasn't, it wasn't a convention center at all. That's how this discussion came about. I think in the future, possibly, you know, at the port, I think convention center would be great, but especially now with COVID and everything, the unknowns of right now, I think that wasting that money for the, for a study would not be a good idea because I don't think we would get accurate information. And I'm sure as heck not okay with general fund money going to cover the shortfalls or committing this commission or future commissions because we may not pay the bed tax directly, but it's our families that come here. It's us that benefit. It's our restaurants that people eat at when they do come here. It's everything. So, I mean, we, we are tied into this TDT tax as well, and right now, I'm just not comfortable with it. I think, again, I think those studies probably have been done by private companies, by foreign investors, and by other people that have looked into doing it, and I just don't, I don't see it. I don't see anybody banging down our door other than the recent hotel that wanted to get money from us for the next 20 years. So, I'm not going to support it right now. Commissioner Lober?
I just want to make a very quick observation. I think this is the first time in recorded history that Commissioner Smith and I were together on an issue where everyone else was on the other side of it. So, make of it what you will, but I just wanted to point it out because that is a rare occurrence. I think this is the only time thus far.
Congratulations?
Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, I guess.
Commissioner Smith, I think you don't need to think twice next time then. I just want to throw out to you guys, I do have that RevPAR one that we did a while ago on this study, and I'd be glad to give it to you. It was done by Delaware North. It's a great study on this type of things for basketball tournaments, and that's what we were trying to do, remember? And Delaware North got a little hitch with the COVID, so we had to withdraw with what we were doing. So, I have that study. I'd be glad to share it with you. And again, you can look through it. You'll see the first three years, they don't make money even economically. And the hard part is trying to program it. It is not cheap. It's really expensive. If we had a Disney World or something where people want to come for conventions, our other draw here is pretty much beaches unless you have USSA or somebody doing it. But if we ever do agree with this, I think it needs to go in Districts One and Five because we're the ones behind the eight ball and trying to stir up tourism in our districts. I'm going to throw that out to you as we move forward.
And I think, honestly, I think, again, I think it's timing, and I think, you know, we have an aquarium that we're trying to get built, and I think once that happens, maybe we'll see a little more activity in the North County. So, I would agree with you on that. Commissioner Lober?
Could we ask if it's all right if someone doesn't have an objection up here to have Commissioner Pritchett go ahead and just provide that filed to the clerk's office to include in tonight's minutes?
I think she could just email it to our office as well.
Abby, do you care either way? I'm just thinking.
It's already public record. I always have, Florida's an area for it, too.
Okay. I just, I figured it would be easier for folks to get, and it's clean, but whatever you all want. If that's your preference, I'm fine with that, but I would like to see it, please.
Okay, so is there a motion, or is it pointless?
No, I think it's pointless at this point.
Okay. All right. Item J2, we're going to take five, maybe seven minutes, because we've got a lot of cards and there'll be a lot of discussion, and we want to kind of give you a chance to stretch and give us a chance to. All right, thanks.
Ms. Sullivan, I just realized you had a card for J1, so I apologize. Did you want to talk about it?
It didn't pass anyway, so I'll miss it.
I apologize. We have so many cards up here, so I just saw it now. Your name is familiar up here, so I just, I thought it was an old card. I apologize for that. All right, call this meeting back to order. Item J2.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. This is the resolution that the Board directed me to prepare from the last meeting. This is essentially declaring that significant legal rights will be impaired if Brevard County is required to complete the intergovernmental conflict resolution procedures with the town of Malabar prior to court proceedings. I'm just looking for a motion to vote on this one.
Okay, I have a bunch of cards, so I mean, we're going to, I think we're going to hear the cards first, if that's okay with the Commission. I have Matthew Stinnett.
Madam Chair, just real briefly, I don't know how many cards we've got, but I know in the past if we've had an absolute slew, we've sometimes reduced three minutes to two.
I think we're okay.
Okay, whatever you think.
We don't have as many as the room looks like.
Okay.[107.42][107.42](Laughter)
Mr. Stinnett, go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. Matt Stinnett, Town Manager for Town of Malabar. I'll make this real quick. I just want to reiterate the ask that I had of you at the last Commission meeting, to kind of direct your staff to work with us. I think we can really get this done quickly if we could just work together. And then the second is to table this motion, this resolution. Understand the attempt to push this forward and get it done quickly so that the work can get started, but I don't think that's going to be the fastest way for you. So if there's another option that can save the taxpayers' dollars and avoid the battle, I'd appreciate it if you guys would consider that. So, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Pritchett may have a question for you. And I usually don't do this, but you're the Town Manager of that, so I'm going to make an exception. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I wouldn't do it either, except you are the Town Manager, so I won't do this to everybody else. But again, I would like to reinstate, if you will reinstate our other permit, then we can go back and you guys can talk about maybe some other options or give your ideas. But if you did that, then we're not having to pay $40 for every tree with a new permit. So if you could do that, I know we had quit the meetings moving forward, but I would be open to having the meetings read adjourned if you would reinstate our permit.
So let me clarify what Council's intent was. What I asked them for was to allow me to not take a look at what's in our current code here with, in terms of the fees, the permitting requirements. I know one of the issues from last night was possibly the cost of a tree survey, and so all of that is completely on the table. We just need to have a discussion about it, so that's what I'm asking you for.
Can you just put the permit back in place, since we tried to get the extension, because we got the funds? If you could just do that, I don't know where Commissioner Tobias is on this, but it would, it would be ready to start working on whatever y'all need to talk about after that. But I just feel like the county was really slapped at that time of not being able to do what we've been trying to do under the Eels for this state owns the property. We're just responsible paying for it. So if you're willing to do that, I, I don't know where Commissioner Tobias is on that, but we had closed all of the future meetings, but the meetings, if he'd be open to it, I would reopen them if you give us back that permit and reinstate it, because you did it yourself personally as a manager. So maybe if you had the authority, they gave you authority to do that, I think we would be able to go back to doing what we're doing.
I would say I'm concerned about the precedent that sets for allowing expired permit after several months to be reopened, but I am more than willing to entertain that if you are asking us to reopen the permit. So, and that would open for discussions for, I mean, that's essentially the same thing that I'm offering to you. So, but approving it as it is is, I don't know that I can do that.
When you said reopen, can you explain that?
I would say that we could take a look at, the original permit was very vague, and so it was signed off on, maybe not looked at as something that was a big deal. But there's very little information in there for me to work with, and a lot of concerns on it, so if we can start talking about that. The fees, we can certainly not look at.
Okay, I, I thank you, thank you for being brave enough to come out again. But just so everybody knows, we had this permit with you guys for over a year. We were out trying to find funding. We didn't have the ability to do it at the time, came back, and you wrote, denied on trying to extend our permit. Just so, that's just what we're dealing with right now moving forward. So, but thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, Commissioner Loebert?
Gotcha. And I'm, I'm trying to be somewhat diplomatic, so please bear with me. And I don't mean this sarcastically or facetiously, but when you were here the last time, I think we collectively, granted, I may have said the least of all, made it pretty clear that that was the goal up here. I think at four, maybe five of the five of us would like to take the fences down if we can just go forward with the work as was previously approved. But the issue is, it doesn't sound like there was a conversation from what you're presenting this evening between then and now amongst either your, your Council or between you and individual Council members. And it's just, it's dumbfounding to me that we were as clear as I believe we were with respect to the request, and now it's something where time has passed, it's a hot issue up, you know, down there and here as well. I'm just having a hard time understanding why there wasn't a conversation between then and now as to the specific request. And if you can tell me something to that end that would elucidate why that appears not to have taken place, I would love to hear it.
I'm not completely following what you're, what you're saying there.
So the last time you were up here, we essentially said the way to make it go away, and if someone else took it differently, please let me know, because my impression was we were pretty clear. If you give us our permit back, this is all moot. But between then and now, it doesn't sound like you have approval from your Council to do that. So to say that you'll take a look at it, if there was taking a look that should have taken place, it should have been prior to now, after we'd requested it the last time. So I just, I mean, if it's an inevitability that we're going to go one way or the other, I would rather just get to the end conclusion. If you're going to do it, great. If you're not going to do it, great, but just let us know.
Let me put it this way. You're asking me to approve a permit that I do not believe should have been issued to begin with.
Or at least to have had the conversation amongst your Council members between the last time we put that request in and now.
Right, so that permit, because of its insufficiency, is why I asked Council to allow me to have negotiations with your staff on permitting requirements for a new permit. So it's a process thing, right? Extending a permit that I don't think should have ever been issued, I just can't do that. But I am completely open to discussing and applying for a new permit.
That doesn't really get us to where we need to be, that's the problem.
If it's, if it's, if you're asking me to open up that old permit and work with your staff to make it sufficient, I'm, yes, I'm open to that. But that has not happened from your staff. All it was, was resubmitted exactly the way it was, and it's expired, and we don't.
Well, let me, let me ask you further into that. Would you be amenable if we submitted a new permit application that had somewhere between 10,000 and 20,000 trees in it to granting that, or is the number of the trees a nonstarter for you?
I think there's a couple of things that I want to look at, but yes, I mean, I don't know if you have taken a look at the alternative plans that have been submitted into the SMC meeting and I sent to your staff as well. Council has fully endorsed those plans, and they are intended to work within the thousand or so trees that were intended to be left behind. So I don't think it's really a matter of how many trees, at least on my end. It's just the details of the work that's being, going to be accomplished. I have some concerns that I'd love for your staff to address. I wasn't here early enough to, to get that before the lines of communication got shut down, so.
And that's, that's fair. I think the problem, though, at least in part to me, the problem is a lot of this, and I'm not trying to fault you, I really am not, where you say you have concerns, I just have not gotten any specificity as to what those concerns are, and there's been ample opportunity. And I, I think if we had a better understanding, at a minimum, we would save you and our staff time in going roundabout with this, and I'm just not hearing it.
Okay, as an example, the work conditions of the site, which entrances are they going to be using to enter and exit the site? I need to know that information. All that was ever provided to the town was, we're going to cut down whatever trees within our management plan. And that was handwritten on our application. So we've got a lot of information from you guys, and some of it was public records requests, and some of it was, you know, people getting information from staff, but I just.
Can I ask a question? Were you not, were you out, were you gone, were you away?
Correct.
So who issued that permit? Was it the old manager?
That was the building official that used to be under his purview.
So it was the building official. So now the building official doesn't have the authority to issue permits now? Is that correct?
Not when it comes to land clearing, trees, et cetera, so.
Because had we started the work before the permit expired, then there would be no, you wouldn't be, we wouldn't be here. And do you, just in your professional and personal opinion, believe that this qualifies under your commercial permitting, the clearing, under your development code?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Loebert, did you have more questions?
Yeah, I mean, just one, one last thing, and then I'll hand it over, because I know there are other folks that are kind of chomping at the bit perhaps more than I. Believe me, if, if, if I thought that the only issue was which entrances and exits we'd be using, I would be happy to say, you know, I'll go ahead and make a motion that staff give you that typewritten, not handwritten, and we can all go home and everyone's happy, or at least content. But the concern that I have is, between the last time you were here and now, there's really been nothing that I've gotten in terms of that specificity. And I'll be honest with you, and I'm not saying it's your doing. Frankly, it's probably more the doing of your, of your Council members. A lot of this is coming across, and it's not my district. I mean, the Loebert doctrine, I think, as Commissioner Tobias calls it, is essentially whatever they want in their district. If you want it, okay, I'm there. If you don't want it, all right, then that's fine. But to me, sitting over here, where it really doesn't impact my constituents apart from having to pay into the Eels program, a lot of it's coming across as pretextual. And I'm not saying definitively that that's the case, but it just seems like these minute elements are brought up, and that now they're a roadblock when they're not really the issue. So I'll, I'll leave it alone, but that's, that's where I'm at.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, sir. And again, I want to thank you for being brave enough to come up here, because I know you're the point of the fire. But I do want to reiterate that the county is good to the city, correct?
Yes.
We've always been, been good to you. And I just want to, to make this clear that this is the state of Florida property, and somehow through this Eels program, we got stuck with maintaining it. We spent over $1.6 million maintaining this for the scrub jays. And so for what we are required to do through the state, we have to do things for the Eels. I'm not an expert on this, but the NASA scientists are. They came back with this. They said, you've got to take care of these things. I think you guys should have showed up to these Eels meetings, talked to them, and said, is it possible to do this? Because again, they're the experts, and it's wonderful to be able to enjoy it, but the primary purpose of this property is that scrub jay. That's what the primary purpose was. That's, that's why it was picked up and bought. So I just want to reiterate this before people come up and make sure everybody understands this. Now, you didn't approve the permit, your building guy did, but you denied the permit when it came back. And so, you know, just, just for the relationship, you probably should have picked up the phone halfway into it and said, look, you know, I got a little struggle with this, what can we do? But instead, you know, we just got slapped. No, you aren't, you aren't having it. And that doesn't happen between governments, because we're all working for the same purpose. So I don't, I don't think things were handled well from your city. And then, you know, honestly with you, not that I wouldn't be honest with you, but like Commissioner Loebert said, we do respect the Commissioner of the District, and Commissioner Tobias had some great points. And your staff member sent out that link, you know, nothing bad happened, so I couldn't help but listening. And I was really shocked with the comments from your Council. So I, I'm struggling with that, trying not to make an emotional decision with this. But you've got a big uphill thing to do, because it's, it's not a, we're not building a hotel in there. We are trying to do maintenance on a Eels property. So I, I'm with Commissioner Zonka, because I think she was leading that way. I don't think it falls into the same category of some things that you guys are considering, but that's my opinion, and I'm not on your board. But just being very honest with you, this is my struggle with this, and these are the hurdles that I'm uncomfortable that we're having to get through.
Commissioner Smith?
I'd like to hear what Commissioner Tobias has to say.
Yeah, there you go.
Anything more for?
Yeah, first of all, I appreciate you showing up again, and I appreciate you being honest about your personal opinion, whether it coincides with that of your Board or not. Before actions were taken, this Board spent, gave your Board a full month, and the reason they gave them a month is because you had some holidays coming up, so we didn't want you to have to call a special meeting, so gave you the opportunity not to spend any extra resources. I showed up there, didn't say anything. You guys decided not to move forward. I completely, utterly, and totally respect that. That was a decision by duly-elected individuals. We've made a decision too, and the state of Florida looks at intergovernmental conflicts. In fact, there's a whole chapter on that, where a third party looks at this, where you have the opportunity to, to make your case, and we have the opportunity to make our case. That's all this is. That is, all this is. I, I too wish this could have been handled. And in all honesty, had you come to us and said the Board had extended the permit, and we have some suggestions, that would have been great. But you didn't. And as such, we are going to take an, hopefully, I don't, I don't know, but I'm going to make a motion, regardless, unless something comes up otherwise, to make a motion to, to send this to a third party to look at this. This is not adversarial. In fact, this is conflict resolution. It's obviously not something that I'd like to do. I wish you could handle this sooner. I understand the concerns of many of the residents there. However, we have a, we have a responsibility here to, to our taxpayers, same way you have a responsibility to yours. And mine are on both sides of this, because I represent Malabar, and I represent another 100-plus thousand people out there. So I don't want this to sound adversarial. Again, this is conflict resolution, and this is putting it in a third party's, as you know, a third party. And I, listen, I greatly appreciate you standing up there and saying, hey, listen, someone, in my opinion, made a, made a mistake. However, you know, let's, let's have someone that's trained in this make, make that determination. You make your case, we'll make ours, and we'll see where the, see where the chips fall. I appreciate you being up here. I don't mean ill will on anyone. I just think it's best that we let a third, a third party, independent third party, make the decision.
Well, thank you for your consideration.
Thanks. Do you have anything you want to add, since we kind of kept you up here for a bit?
No, it's just, you know, January 3rd was my first day back in the office after being gone for over a year, so apologize if I'm late to the game, and I think that's made it slow on our end in terms of coming to you sooner. So that's why I'm here now, and I'm doing my best to, to try and work this out with you guys, but if this is the route you want to take.
You've done a great job. You mentioned that you were serving the country, right?
Yes, sir.
And you didn't, you didn't say that. I really have a lot of respect, not only for you doing that, but not mentioning that as your excuse. And one of the reasons why I really think Malabar made a great decision, when the, even though I may disagree with their opinion on, on this one, I think they made a great decision when they selected you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. All right, Andrew Thompson? And after Andrew, Murray Hahn?
Good evening, members of the County Commission. My name is Andrew Thompson. I'm a citizen of Malabar, Florida. And basically, what I'd like to do, address is really start off with a couple of misconceptions. I know we're dealing with J2 regarding intergovernmental conflict and resolution, and as Mr. Commissioner Tobias just referenced, your objective is to work for your constituents, for the citizens of Brevard County. I wanted to do, basically, I know I've got two and a half minutes here to basically say a whole lot I'd like to say, and I appreciate, I will try to stay in time. There's really a conflict here of balance and misinformation, because even tonight, there's been references to a one-year permit. The permit was issued May 27th, I'm sorry, May 21st, 2021, and it was, it ran out in November. It didn't run out, run out in January. We've had a tremendous number of meetings on this. If you look at the research, and there's been a tremendous amount of research that has been done on this by a whole lot of folks behind me and other folks not in this room. The information that you look at, you'll find that there's no word JAY in the lease. The properties were purchased in '93 and '94, Malabar Scrub. The referendum occurred in 2004. The referendum that we are talking about is what the voters thought they asked for when they okayed the $60 million bond referendum. That was in 2004. It's not coming up until 2024 for renewal. Those were the original thoughts that the voters thought they read on the ballot, was passive recreation, protection of habitat, environmental education, and essentially protection of what they thought were the forests, what they counted as being environmentally endangered lands. So we're basically talking about 28 years have gone by since the purchases. The Eels program has had the property for 28 years, and now we're in an emergency situation to try to get scrub jays back there. In that 28 years, what happened was, was a lot of vegetation growth, tree growth, trails went in. Malabar's a trail town in this county. You've got another one in Titusville. It has to do with ecotourism. It has to do with people enjoying the outdoors. What we're talking about is basically, we have a plan in to you all. If you choose not to read it, that's up to you. But the plan was very carefully discerned. We went to the meetings, as referenced, if we had only gone to the meetings. We went to the meetings. The signs went up right before Thanksgiving. The signs, there wasn't a lot of talk. It's not like there were, we were invited to a bunch of meetings, and this was going down, and we didn't, we didn't know about it until it was almost too late. You've got the plan in front of you. It's reasonable. It saves the trees on the periphery. We're not trying to save the trees in the middle. Still, it goes down to two trees per acre, 1,000 trees, and the targeted 500 acres is 577. Thank you.[1385.92][1385.92](Applause)
Murray Hahn, also resident of Malabar. I'm on the Greenways and Trails Commission. I'm also on your Bicycle Pedestrian Trails Advisory Committee. I'm also on the Eels Recreation Education Advisory Committee, and I'm on the Board of Directors for the BMBA. I don't think we need to bypass the intergovernmental dispute process, and I don't think we need to do the intergovernmental dispute process. I believe, and I want to aim this directly at Commissioner Tobias, we really have, as an engineer, we've tried to study and learn the rules. And, and we believe that we have, the PVA, the variability analysis, is a great work. We're not quarreling with the science that was done by Cape Canaveral. What, they're looking for 70% strong habitat. And when you read the definition at the FWC of habitat, it allows for certain things. And we believe that we have come up with a modification to the plan that allows us to keep some of these heritage trees near the periphery of the trail, and allows us to keep a few trees that are in a wetland next to Country Cove that are already the Eels fire break goes inboard of that, because it's too wet to have a fire break there, and a few things like this. We are, we are 100% good with preserving the scrub jay. And we believe, and this is key, Commissioner Tobias, we believe that this compromise is 100% compliant and stronger than what the PVA requires. Now, we don't blame the Eels program for trying to go for everything they could do, given the situation they see they're in, but we believe these small modifications are worth exploring. And we just really, I believe Malabar's error, and speaking to Commissioner Loebert, Malabar's error was issuing a bush hogging permit for what was going to be removal of 20,000 trees. And also, like, there's no access to Malabar West except on Malabar's right-of-way. And if that road, if Malabar Road is damaged in a logging operation, they're going to come after Malabar, not the private contractor. And so Matt Stinnett needs to know who is controlling the ingress and outgress on his right-of-way onto Malabar Road. For instance, that's not in the contract. So what the contract says, from the state of Florida to Bodakha Lumber, is that this property is completely turned over to you, Bodakha Lumber, for the duration. Malabar doesn't have access to their own right-of-way, and that's it. And it says, fix the road if you damage the right-of-way. Doesn't say anything about Malabar Road, doesn't say anything about Brook Hollow, which the other end exits onto. So we need to know things like this. That are some of his concerns. And so we really believe we have a great compromise, and you guys have done a great job this evening. And we're just looking for that same level of consideration. And we appreciate your time.[1585.01][1585.01](Applause)
Glenn Dunham?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Glenn Dunham. I'm currently President of the Brevard Mountain Bike Association. I live at 291 Naylor Street, Northeast Palm Bay. I'd like to see us table this tonight. I think that we can work this out in better means, less cost, and faster. I'm here to speak on behalf of all trail users within Brevard County. If I may, can I get a show of hands of everyone in this room that is here to support a compromise between Malabar Trail Users, Eels, Town of Malabar, and Brevard County Council? Thank you. These people behind me represent a small percentage of people that seek a better solution to the Eels plans for restoration. We have no desire, we have no desire to fight with our land managers, and as a club are dedicated to doing good things. But Malabar has put forth some reasonable modifications to the Eels plan that should be considered, as they will meet or exceed their goals. I'm asking for us to work together. Please. Thank you for your time.[1667.61][1667.61](Applause)
Jason Strobel?
Thank you, guys, for allowing me to talk. I'm going to talk fast, I have a lot to say. Building off the people behind me, my name is Jason Strobel. I'm Vice President of Brevard Mountain Bike Association. I'm a husband, a father to two little girls, a senior scientist and senior engineer that uses his free time to maintain community-access parks and building community-accessible trails. I'm here to represent the thousands of users, not just mountain bikers, that use Malabar Scrub Sanctuary for the passive recreation. The trail users I'm representing concern their trails are being destroyed, 10,000 to 20,000 trees that will be removed along the property, affecting not just shade, but they also render their type of recreation unavailable on county property at all. According to the county's website, the Eels Program Management Plan, the county manages 117 parks, 21 sanctuaries. Malabar Scrub Sanctuary is one of four sanctuaries, and the county's supporting the highest level of passive recreation identified in the plan to have broad public access for the development and management of education centers. Of these parks and sanctuaries, only one. Malabar Scrub Sanctuary provides the type of land necessary to engage in the type of passive recreation that the public does on the property today. There are also three categories of sanctuaries. Category three is the primary conservation and research. For the regular, for the record, there's similar recreation at Wickham Park, but it is different. I'd also like to point out that just because scrub is in the name of the sanctuary, that doesn't mean that the sanctuary was for only optimal habitat for the scrub jay, represents scrub habitat. If you look at Miko Scrub Sanctuary, you'll see a small portion is habitable by the scrub jay. The work being done at Malabar Scrub Sanctuary is going to help save the scrub jay population of South Brevard. There are other populations of Brevard County that will not go extinct with continued management. According to the Population and Viability Analysis, which actual research is done, which this is what the actual research has done to save the scrub jay from extinction, if the habitat is improved to 70% strong and supplementation of a minimum of HA's a year occurs, it prevents extinction of the scrub jay population of South Brevard. The plan we have before us is one-sided and overreaching. Eels' plan of action is to transform the habitat into optimal scrub jay habitat, and not just the 70% strong as the PVA suggests. Up until now, the Eels program has not considered passive recreation. Up until now, the Eels program has not considered passive recreation within their plans at Malabar Scrub Sanctuary, and the Scientific Management Committee is clear of this. In closing, I am coming today to request that we have all stakeholders become involved in a restoration plan at Malabar Scrub. We desire a more developed, a more balanced plan for the scrub jay of South Brevard, and considers the unique recreation at Malabar Scrub Sanctuary. It may seem urgent to do this work before March, but according to the PVA, the scrub jay population of South Brevard declines to extinction in 40 to 70 years. And with similar management occurring, there is an urgency, but there is not an emergency. We surely can take just a few months to come up with a balanced plan that works within the requirements of the PVA's findings to save the scrub jay of South Brevard, and considers the unique passive recreation that goes on at this Category 1 sanctuary. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening. Just nothing more that I could add, except for my personal point of view on some of these. My name is Mark Britt. I live in Malabar. My property backs up to the sanctuary, so I have a real personal interest to all this. First thing, I do want to say is, this has been an education tonight. You have a tremendous job to do. Some of these issues that you face, wow, you know, I mean, God bless you and God guide you with all that you have to do on your job. I do think, you know, you talked about Matt, you talked to Matt about approving this permit, and then you'll take down the gates. Well, I think you got it backwards. You show a good faith effort by taking those gates down tomorrow. You show that, and then let's let the people. Sorry. Sorry. This is a very emotional thing for me. Last week, or your last meeting, I was at the meeting, I gave a little presentation. Maybe I rambled on, probably. My wife said I do. But I left this meeting, and I drove back to the sanctuary, and that gate was up already. I don't know how fast they can, they can work that way. So it was already a done process, but it's before the approval was done, you know. And I think, I think the idea of putting up those gates was, if it was to incite people to get under their skin, well, God at work, look at these people, you know. But I do want to say, real quick, I mean, I want to add that there's a beautiful lake there, all right? We have to, it would really show a good faith by both Malabar, the Town of Malabar, and the U Commissioners. Let's do this for the people. Let's put up some chairs out there, benches. I mean, it's a wonderful place. We've got a lot of people that, this is probably one of the most beautiful parts of Brevard County. Let's, let's do this. Let's do this for the people. Let's put up benches throughout, you know, and you could still do whatever you have to do as far as the scrub jays. I would love to sit on the bench. I heard stories about scrub jays approaching people, taking peanuts out of their hand. That's incredible. That's incredible. We've got to save these little critters. But we can, we don't have to destroy what is beauty now, what is just a fantastic place. I think we have to work this out. I don't know anything about intergovernmental conflict. I do know from my prior career, if you give it to the work of these, let them work it out, Murray, Drew, and the Eels Committee, it'll work out. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Hubbard. My husband and I moved to Malabar in large part because of the beautiful sanctuaries and nature trails that are within minutes of our front door. The county's decision to block public access to the Malabar Scrub Sanctuary has deeply impacted us and our Brevard County community. I understand that the sanctuary will need to be closed when the county re-appeals for and receives their permit to proceed with the Eels program plans, but I strongly disagree with the county's decision to block access only because the Town of Malabar would not reinstate the original permit that the county allowed to expire over two months ago. Having personally polled hundreds, if not thousands of permits myself, I know that the Town of Malabar followed their and enforced their rules and regulations with the county just as they would have with any other business or resident who had allowed the permit to expire. It appears that our sanctuary is being held hostage by the county. Yes, there are other trails that we can seek refuge in, but this sanctuary is part of an entire trail system. This sanctuary allows one of my neighbors to safely ride her bike to visit her grandkids almost every single day, and her grandkids take these trails to visit their grandparents on a weekly basis. Right now, they can't safely do that, and there's absolutely no valid reason for it. There are countless stories like this. According to the CDC's most recent data from 2019, 47,511 people died by suicide, making it the 10th leading cause of death in the US. I mention this because this sanctuary is not just about riding bikes or walking. This sanctuary is a literal haven where healthcare workers, engineers, people from all professions and walks of life, the elderly, and children can get away from the stress, pain, and noise of their lives. This place where people can unwind, decompress, and find peace and solace in nature. Arbitrarily blocking our access to the sanctuary has taken an emotional, mental, and physical toll on so many of us. I have a petition here, signed by at least 199 residents who are opposed to the fences installed on January 25th. 199 may not seem like a big number to you, but these are 199 human beings whose lives are impacted by the county's decisions. I ask that you take a moment to imagine these people standing here before you, along with the 1,549 people who signed the change.org petition, who are also concerned about the proposed Eels plans. This is not just about protecting the scrub jay. This is also about the lives who are impacted by your actions and decisions. We want the county and the Town of Malabar to work together to come to a sensible alternative that meets Eels program science and preserves one of Brevard's greatly valued natural treasures. I ask you to please consider removing the fences until you have a legitimate reason for their presence, so that Brevard County's, and so that Brevard County's mission, vision, and core values are also upheld. Thank you for your time.
Hello. My name is Barbara Cameron. I'm the widow of Richard Cameron, and the Town of Malabar has a 100-acre track called Cameron Preserve. And it is owned by the Town of Malabar. It's not owned by the state. After Richard passed away, it took me a couple of years to go back to the Trails and Greenway in Malabar, and I have been totally, totally impressed at the time, the efforts, and the responsibilities that Murray Hand and Drew are doing for the Trails and Greenway. So I just want to ask you to look at what they've presented to you, because it is an alternative. It's not cut and dry. Richard and I worked with the Eels program right from the get-go. We started the trailhead on Marie Street in the year 2000, and we worked hard and we created the icon in Brevard County with volunteers and all of Richard's equipment and everything, no money from the city or the county. So, you know, we did this because we love Malabar, we want to be part of the program. We want you to just give the consideration of the program, the alternative that Drew and Murray have presented to you. And so that's all I have to say, and I appreciate you giving me the chance to voice my opinion and to be here today.
Thank you. That's the last card I have. Commissioner Lober?
Just a couple of things, and I'll hand it over to Commissioner Tabia, who I'm sure has probably more desire to be heard, or at least I think the folks have more of a desire to hear from him, I should say pardon. A couple of things. First, with this change.org petition, I just pulled it up sitting here, there's a photo that's got nice black and white mug shots of all of us up there.
Oh, seriously?
And it says, "Brevard County Commissioners Want to Destroy the Sanctuary and Are Unwilling to Compromise." They closed the sanctuary because the citizens of Malabar refused, and they're a bunch of all caps, to let them destroy the trees.
Wow.
So that's, that's the petition that was signed, and the current count was 1,500 and some odd. Granted, I have no idea if any of them are in Singapore, or maybe in Finland, or wherever. So I know, and I appreciate that, but if you want me to support anything, you're going to get me to vote the other way right now by speaking over me.
No, please.
I shut up the whole time you all were up here, and I think I have a right to speak.
You've got as much time as you want.
Okay, that's enough.
Three minutes.
Okay, then that's fine. I had a compromise that I was going to propose, but I'll just shut up then. That's fine.
Okay. Please, please.
Never mind.
All right. Okay, we're not, we're not going to go back and forth. We have to, we have to maintain order, please. Please. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I will reiterate what our chair has said. If you guys want us to respect you, you have to respect us. And if you don't want to respect us, you can leave right now. And if you don't want to leave willingly, that's why we have police officers here. Okay? So having said that, I have mixed feelings with regard to this issue. You're not going to get anywhere. You're not going to get anywhere making demands. We're not going to get anywhere making demands. It's pointless. It's like a hissing contest. You know, you make your argument, you don't listen to ours. We make our argument, you don't listen to you. We don't listen to you. So I think that's, we're really kind of an impasse here. So I would like to suggest that we give the county and Mr. Stinnett 30 days to come up with a compromise that their council and our commission can approve. If that doesn't work, then I would support an intergovernmental conflict resolution. Because, folks, we're done, you're done. You say there's a compromise that works, I'm willing to hear it. We're not going to hear it if we dig our heels in. You're not going to hear us if you dig your heels in. I mean, it just goes both ways. So, and, and I don't, I don't need any of that. I, I'm really kind of an innocent bystander here, because I've seen errors made on both sides. You guys can point fingers at us because we've done some dumb things, and we can point fingers at you because you've done some dumb things. There's nobody that's blamed us here. So that's what I would suggest to my fellow commissioners, that we all take a breath. You guys take a breath. Give them until the first meeting or second meeting, whatever you guys decide. Let them say their piece. Our folks can say their piece, and we either have an answer, or we don't, and then we go to conflict resolution. Because I'm ready to be done with this. It's gone on too long, and we're, we're at an impasse. If you want to look up impasse in a dictionary, I'm sure this picture's in there. So that's my suggestion.
Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I misspoke. The third party is not the conflict resolution mediator, whatever, that would be, that would be a judge. So still an impartial individual, probably, you know, an elected impartial individual. But we've given Malabar 30 days. We've done far more than that. They, quite frankly, treated our staff absolutely horrifically, and may not be some of the individuals in here, but you heard the recording, and I want to thank-
We did. You have a standing second for whatever you want, John?
So the 30 days were up. We did it. We voted as a board to give Malabar an additional 30 days to come back with a permit that they had already agreed upon. You see a bunch of aggravated citizens. I wonder if they were as aggravated with the town when they approved the permit the first time? I don't know. I went to one meeting, and the anger seemed as though it was pointed at us, and Facebook does that, and a town council may do that. But, guys, I really appreciate you participating, but I'm just not intimidated by emails or petitions, because the science is on our side, the county's side. Not, not, not my science. I'm, I'm in political science, guys. I'm in social science. I'm not in a hard science. But I could go over the numerous state and federal agencies that I've looked, looked at, and not I looked at, the Eels organization. My suggestion, everything's 2020 in hindsight, but had you, or the town, the, sat down with the Eels folks, our advisory board, and looked at this, that might have been a viable solution. However, the issue is, we've got a nesting season coming up, and we've got a bird population that is not doing very well. So this is not something that we can sit on our hands and wait. And what this resolution does is just hands it over, like I mentioned the second time, to a third party, that one, that one being a judge. And I'll tell you what, you can make your case. I don't suggest you calling the judge any names.
Let him try.
But I love, I love the passion, I love the fire. I just disagree. I'm, I'm looking at the Eels Land Acquisition Manual that's as old as Eels, and it says, "All sanctuary activities will consider resource protection as the primary goal, with public access and passive recreation as an important secondary consideration." My understanding of this project is, the trails will be there. We're not altering any of the trails other than, than taking down some trees, 10,000 to 20,000, that are going to benefit a threatened species. And there was one gentleman that got up here that I greatly respect, who said, "You know what? I live up against it, and it will impact me," where I absolutely agree it. I wish everyone would have said, "Listen, I love mountain biking, I don't give a damn about birds." Because I can respect that. I can, I may disagree with it, but I absolutely respect that. What I didn't hear-
Okay.
What I didn't hear was any science. And, and the lack, the abject lack of science with five people that don't have-
Please.
There were many opportunities with the Eels advisory committees to come up, present the science, listen to the experts that were up there, have their, have the opinions aired out, but we're, we're past that point. And the more we wait, unfortunately, the more the scrub jay population decreases. So I'm going to make a motion to accept the resolution declaring the significant legal rights will be impaired if Brevard County is required to compete, complete interlocal, intergovernmental conflict resolution procedures with the Town of Malabar prior to a court proceeding. That's the motion.
Enthusiastic second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Tabia, a second by Commissioner Lober. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Knight, thank you. I listened to you at the meeting, and I thought you did a very good job, sir. But let me ask you this. Why did we purchase this property for the state of Florida? What was the primary purpose of this property?
Scrub habitat protection, scrub jay protection.
Okay. And, guys, you have to understand this. It's not us against you. We're not really trying to take you on, but we were given the responsibility to carry out that mission. And I don't, I'm not, I'm not an expert on these things, so we have an Eels Board, and they have the science come in with the studies, and they came back and said, "Look, you've let these trees grow. The scrubs are getting eaten by the hawks. You have to get these down. You should have had fires." Yeah, it is. You go ask and ask the scientists, you can't argue with me on that. But these are the things that have to be done. So here's the thing that should have happened, is probably the city should have gone and said, "Look, is there a way to save a couple of these trees?" Because here's this, your recreation is not going away. We are not doing a thing to mess with that. No. The canopies might, but this, you're, well, I'm not going to argue-
Okay, please.
But this isn't what we were told by the Eels Board, which everybody keeps referencing to, and this is their recommendation from the scientists coming in. So that's the part you have to go take up your argument with, because this is the data that we're getting, and it's our responsibility to the state of Florida to make sure this is a scrub jay habitat. And then other things we can do to enjoy it's okay, but this is what we have to do as a commission. This is our job. And the NASA coming along with this information, and Mr. McKnight doing this, we're not- and Mr. McKnight doing this, we're not trying to do anything that's trying to harm anybody. And I had a little bit of heartburn of putting up the fence to stop the bikes, but we need to find a way to move forward, because this is a very endangered species, and this is our job to try to take care of this. Again, if the city will reinstate this permit, we can start working towards whatever it is we're working to. You can go meet with the county. You can meet with the Eels Board and see if that other ideas you have can be changed or implemented in. But you have to understand that we did have this permit. By having this permit, we went out and ascertained funds to be able to do this. We've already spent 100, 1. I'm sorry, I can't remember how much we spent, 1.6 million on this property. It is state property. It belongs to the state of Florida, which we got stuck with the bill with maintaining it for this purpose. So that's what you're dealing with. And we're not, you know, trying to do anything with anybody, but this is what we have the legal responsibility to do. So my recommendation would be to get hold of the county and to talk to the Eels Board and ask them if those other ideas are possible. But you need to go listen to what happened with the City of Malabar's council, because I listened in on that. The comments were, "Stick it to the county for everything you can get." Mr. Tobias, you played that tape. I listened to it, and I'm like, "Man, these guys aren't wanting to work with anything. We have a dire situation here, and they're not going to help us with any of it." And, Mr. Manager, you've been wonderful showing up with this. But this was a very difficult situation, and we really do need to make a statement. This is a very important situation that we work through. So again, I recommend that you reach out to the county staff, talk to them about the ideas, the Eels Boards. Maybe there's something else that still can be worked with this. But again, our purpose here is, we must be responsible to the scrub jays on this property and go with the information given with the scientists. That's what I just want to explain to you guys. I know it's passionate, and I know you've got a lot of strong opinions, and I really think it's wonderful that you have all that going in your heart for what you want to do, and I appreciate it. But we have to do this on this side. So that's what I just wanted to tell you.
Okay. Mr. McKnight, you've been awfully quiet. We're going to make you speak at least a little bit about this. As far as the new plan that was presented by no organization, just some individuals, how long would it take to go through a plan like that, to see if it's even a viable one?
We already have a draft response that's just about ready for review.
Can you give us some insight to that? I mean, just because, I mean, we're voting on this issue now. We probably need to have at least your thoughts on it.
The committee, the selection management committee felt that two scenarios in that plan, which involved the relocation of trails, had merit. So that's what we focused on. And so we're prepared in that draft to make some recommendations for the relocation of trails, essentially about a mile of trail into shaded areas, so it wouldn't leave the scrub and go into shaded areas.
So it would move the trail as opposed to changing the plan for the tree removal?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so that wouldn't change our plan that we have in place now?
Correct.
Okay, because, see, that's my biggest concern, if we start modifying the plan. It's not a matter of, you know, counting trees per acre, because it's a much more systemic plan. It's not, it's really not just a numbers game, as much as it is a solid scientific plan. Again, you know, we go back to the meeting. I'm over it, because I know politicians get impassioned, but, you know, the manager says that, you know, if the county will work with them on the permit, they'll consider the permit. But what that sounds like to me, and it's, again, not coming from the manager, is if the county doesn't agree to what this council wants, we're not going to issue the permit, or we're going to make it, I think the words were, "as difficult, painful, and as expensive as possible" to the county, I think is what the words used by their council. I can't remember if those were the exact words. So at least we know the intent of the council. May not be the intent of the manager, obviously. It makes his life a lot easier if we can cooperate. But I don't have a feeling that their council is as eager to work with us as, you know, we may be with them. So again, I want to move forward with the project. I think we're doing a disservice, not just to the property, but to the plan, the plan that's been in place all along. And no recreation is being denied. I mean, I know everyone likes trees, and if the view, the view in the shade is being denied. The trails will not be, the trails, the fences are there now, because we have to move forward. So it's the town of Malabar that will not issue the permit that they should issue. So, okay, so I'm going to support the motion as it stands. I'm going to encourage Mr. McKnight to continue to work with the town of Malabar as much as possible, with their manager as much as possible, without a modification of the current plan. But if, again, if you start moving trails, I think you're going to have another roomful of people, because they may not like where you move the trails. So I think that, obviously, you're going to need, you know, 40 community meetings and some more butt kicking by their council, probably, before you'll get them to agree to a trail that everyone's happy with. So if you want to move forward with that, I would support that, as long as the plan for the scrub jays doesn't change. So any further discussion?
Is that what we're voting on?
What's that?
What you just said, that he's charged with working with them?
No, the plan for the scrub jays is not changed.
Right.
He's going to have to, you're going to have to bring that back anyway, correct? If you start moving trails around and that sort of thing? That has to go through the Eels Board and-
That's correct.
Yeah.
Commissioner Smith, it's just the agenda item, which has been moved and seconded. That's it.
Right. Just to go to mediation?
No.
Or just to go to-
No, he doesn't want to mediate.
I-
But you want to go to the judge to-
Yeah, as an impartial third party.
To bypass the mediation.
Correct. I misspoke the first time, but still the premise is there. You got a third party, their argument made, our argument made, and-
And everybody get a chance to present their case.
Absolutely correct.
And just for clarification, it is to bypass the Chapter 164 procedure, so we would be able to go file in litigation in court, as well as this particular motion under state law. This resolution would require a three-fourth majority vote, just for reference.
Okay.
So what you were suggesting to him is at odds with what-
No, it's not. Not at all.
Okay.
No. This is just, you know, saying that I'm okay, at least me personally, I'm okay with them.
Okay, well, I can tell you that I will vote nay, because I think that our fastest and quickest way forward is to let Mike work with these folks and come up with something within the next 30 days. So.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Commissioner Smith, I just talked to the attorney over here, and she said if we approve this, there's still that amount of time for that to happen, and that way we can go ahead. And if that can't get worked out, we're still able to move forward.
No, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
So this will take 30 days before it even sees a judge?
At least.
Yeah. I was going to say, especially now with COVID.
At least.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Okay, moving on.
Motion approved J3.
I just want to thank all these folks for coming up.
Except the one guy in the front with the backwards cap and the beard. I thank everyone but him. Yes, sir. He has a large vocabulary, yes.
If I could scare down firefighters.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, that's why I was very poignant about his attitude, because he was getting ready for that.
This is the first view of it.
I appreciate the heads up. That's already communicated. Thank you.
No action.
But please, if you see it, let me know. I appreciate it, because I may not. We didn't delete J3, did we? No. J3 is still on there, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, I just saw this. I was getting kind of concerned. Thanks.
All right, are we good? Everybody good? I wish people would be that impassioned about other things like the budget, like-
Like the what?
Like the budget and that sort of thing.
Well, to your point, I can, I made that comment several times, and not just about these folks, but, you know, we passed a $1.6 billion budget. I get no phone calls.
Yep.
Let me get involved with one passionate issue, and the light ring off, the phone rings off the hook.
And I, I'm like Commissioner Tobias, I fully appreciate the discussion. I just hate it when, or I dislike it when a lot of, there's a lot of misinformation, and so you're having to dispel some of that.
Yep.
So, okay, so enough side talk. Sorry, guys. Item J4.
J3.
J3, I'm sorry.
Motion approved.
Motion by Commissioner Lober?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Do we have a date?
Yes, there is a date. We're going to have this special meeting on March 8 at 4:00 PM before our 5:00 PM board meeting.
Do we need that as part of the motion, or no?
Well, it's a motion to approve the request to have the executive session. We'll advertise executive session.
Okay. All righty. Did I call? Yeah, okay, I think so. All right, J4.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Thank you. First of all, before I get into this, I would like to make a point that we know motions at this. I'm just providing some homework for our next meeting. But the board scheduled and canceled a May 16, 2019, meeting, which was set to review advisory boards. During the last commission meeting, the topic of advisory boards came up under a different context. This was looking at term limits. But based on comments that was made, it seemed that the board was still interested in potentially reviewing a list of the county advisory boards to determine if any could be consolidated or altogether eliminated. For reference, at this point, the county has 69 advisory boards, with more than 40 of those 69 not mandated by state law. The county expends more than $500,000 in operational costs for these boards, which certainly is not a small amount. I want you to think, as you do your homework, if you do not recognize the name of the board who is on it, and they haven't advised you, which is their primary purpose, it may be time to look at either consolidating or doing away with it. My office, along with staff, has compiled a spreadsheet to organize the information when considering the issue. The first spreadsheet you have is a master list broken up into categories. This is the red one. If you look at that, that's, the first section of that, 1 through 21, are the mandatory lists, and why they're mandatory, whether it's state statute, interlocal agreement, or voter referendum. On top of that are meetings and the annual cost. Point to this is, these are untouchable, and even if, through potentially a 5-0 vote, we would have trouble doing away with any of them. The second group is the non-mandatory. This is number 22 through 25, but were required to receive substantial funding. If you look at these, cumulatively, these bring in, these, sorry, the annual cost is $13,000 or $14,000, but looking at the numbers, they bring in $5 or $6 million. I believe Commissioner Smith said ROI. There's no better ROI than 22 through 25. Then we get into the ones that we may want to look at. These are the non-mandatory boards. Now, what I did is, I broke up the non-mandatory boards into three parts. A group of them, those would be 26 through 51, are ones that need further consideration. However, it was easy to separate 52 through 55 and 56 through 69. These were the non-mandatory parks and rec boards, of which there are four, and the non-mandatory library boards, of which looks like there were 13 or 14 of them. What I've done is a little bit of work on the non-mandatory parks and rec, as well as the library boards. But before I get there, and I don't want to beat a dead horse dead, so on the second handout, there's a purple one, and it says, "Non-mandatory boards." I have tried to eliminate each one of these six boards to no avail. I understand that the board believes contrary to me that these are necessary, and I respect the opinion of the board. I certainly don't want anyone to show up and advocate why their board is important if it's not going to be brought up. So you have my word, that I would not support bringing up the elimination of, this is the Economic Development Commission of the Space Coast, environmentally endangered land program, Merritt Island Redevelopment Agency, North Brevard Development Board, North Merritt Island Dependent Special District Board, Port St. John Dependent District Advisory Board. So it's important that I list those, because I've tried to get rid of those before, and I'm not going to try to sneak one past the goalie on there. That's why I put them separately. So what I'd like to talk about at the next meeting, but I wanted to give everyone the opportunity, and with the information that my office, as well as staff compiled, first of all, was with the parks and rec. If you look at that, there are four boards. These very easily could be consolidated into one board. Please, I have the number of meetings there, the number of vacancies, as well as who appoints, or who comprises each one of those boards. The one that's slightly more fun, and certainly would have a larger impact, is the library boards, again, of which there are 14. I'm not going to go over the unique nature of some of these boards, but I will point out some very low-hanging fruit. As you see, some of these libraries are city libraries, composed of fully city-appointed individuals, and yet, we are somehow charged with having a cost, certainly as of 2018, of either being at those meetings, recording those meetings, though, again, we have no appointees, and we have really very little jurisdiction over what is done there. This expense would probably be better handled by the city. If you look there, we don't even know the number of vacancies, because this is all kept by the city. How these were formed is located on the spreadsheet, as well as the annual cost. My suggestion, and I will certainly go into detail, is how we not eliminate, but turn over some of these to the cities, as well as how we consolidate some of these others into a larger library board. And some of these are very unique. We have a Merritt Island one, which has gubernatorial appointments, so there's nothing we can do about any of that stuff. However, there are quite a few that we can do that would allow staff to focus more in on their core functions. So again, I will be making some recommendations, even though I think it's pretty darn clear the direction of which I'm going, dealing with the non-mandatory parks and recreation boards, as well as the non-mandatory library boards. I certainly have more research to do, and I encourage everyone to do the same. But my suggestions are listed below, and I look forward to bringing that up at the next meeting. This is a lot of information. I want to thank staff and my office for compiling that, and I think it would be completely unfair for me to present you with this and then ask you to make a decision. If, at some point, we need extra time for this, absolutely, I'm more than willing to do this. I hope this begins the conversation, so we can move on to the list of other non-mandatory boards, of which that is 26 through 51. Madam Chair, thank you for providing me with the time. Madam Chair, thank you for providing me with the time, and I look forward to everyone's feedback at our next meeting.
Commissioner Loebur?
Right, Madam Chair, now that I've had a chance to breathe a little bit after that last agenda item, or a couple of agenda items ago, I think I'm ready to contribute again here. So, looking at, looking at the list that Commissioner Tobias has handed out here, I think we may have some low-hanging fruit that may be easier for us to address, moving forward. Where, where I'm looking in particular are those boards in which they've had no meetings during the entire calendar year, the most recent calendar year, yet they have a cost. If they've not had any meetings, and they have a cost, with the exception of those that are associated with grant funding, like the Community Action Board, or the CDBG Advisory Board, where we've gotten a seven-digit number from each of them individually, and a higher number collectively, I, I wouldn't mind looking at whether or not they're really needed. I, I do know that we may have some special situations with some of them. For instance, we have a committee or a board that deals with hospital bonding, and if the hospitals don't request, or seek to issue bonds, they may not meet at all for a particular year, yet they may meet 10 times if there's a hospital expansion, as we may well have in, in my district in the very, very near future here. I have no problem, at least in concept, at combining some of these parks and rec boards, if there really would be a significant cost savings, but I, I would ask, I don't know that I need a motion for this, but maybe if Mary Ellen and staff can take a look, just to see if combining them would, would really result in huge savings. If it would, the only thing I would ask is that we, we try to be mindful of having a central area for them to meet. And I'm not saying it has to be my district, but if they're coming from, let's say, MIMS, and they're coming from Alabar, as may be the case, I don't know that we should be meeting in either extreme portion of the county, 'cause it's gonna put someone on the road for hours to get there. So, whether it's Vieira, or whether it's Merritt Island, or whether it's Cocoa, something in the center of the, the county just makes sense. But, yeah, I, I have no problem doing this, and I think for, you know, for future, I guess for future purposes, I just would like some clarity from Commissioner Tobias, if you'd like us to individually add items, it's particular boards that we think we, we may be able to do away with, or if your intentions to bring forth something in aggregate that lists a number of boards in the future, 'cause I'm, I'm happy to go through this to whatever extent you'd like me to go through it. I just don't wanna be repeating work that you're doing on your own.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The issue with the, with the special meeting that we're gonna have, we had an agenda, and we didn't really have an outline of which boards, everyone had a different idea. That's why I thought if we all were working off a master list, again, this staff, not my staff, but as well as county-wide staff, helped a great deal with this. So, if there are errors, I'll take responsibility for those, but certainly was not intended, and, and if those come out, I'd be more than willing to put those. But I thought it would be easier to take single bites at the apple, and that's why I focused in on libraries and parks and rec, because there were so many of them, and a few of them certainly didn't make a whole hell of a lot of sense to me.
Sure.
That being said, the parameters that you set forth, I, I'm in agreeance with, but I, I thought we would start with two categories, work those two categories, and then open it up. I certainly, we have long meetings, and I didn't wanna create a, you know, an hour, an hour, an hour, so if, if we spent 30 minutes or 45 minutes on this for the next few mini meetings, I would be very happy with that.
Yeah, if, if it saves us 10 grand to combine the, the parks and rec boards, I'm happy to do it, I'll just put that out there.
Okay. All right, so, moving on. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Pritchett?
Commissioner Tobias, I really like this. What I, I think would be kinda neat to do is we come back next time, we go through these and, and make a decision whether to keep them, or maybe knock them down. I'm thinking some of these boards that meet 12 times a year, I think one good thing to do is have them start meeting every other month. That might be a, a good idea as well. I, I see a couple up top, I don't wanna say it out loud right now, I'm thinking it might be good ideas. I went, just thinking through that, down here, we got the North Brevard Parks and Rec, they'd meet 10 times a year. So, I had a talk with the guys that run that, and I said, "Look, I think it's a little much, why don't we knock it down to four or five times?" He thought it'd be fine. So, I, I think as far as the, the parks, I don't know how Cocoa would be with that. North Brevard's got a lot of parks. So, I think, just from us discussing this, that, you know, we'll talk about this, but I'd like to cut theirs in half. So, that might be another thing to do, is go through and, and cut some of these in half, and, and sir, you're right, a couple of these, I don't know what they are. So, I have to go do a little more homework as well, but I remember one time we had a budget meeting, we went through every line and voted on them. So, maybe we can be ready to do that, maybe we can get rid of some, and then cut back some expenses on others. But thank you for this, this is a good product, and I certainly appreciate it, sir.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, and while we're looking at these, maybe we could look at some of these parks with the idea that we could get some of the cities to take them over. That would streamline some things. Just saying.
It'd also free up some money in the MSDU to actually make the, the parks that are left over that much better.
Just as far as the ones that I have, they're City of Titusville, they pay the county to maintain them, so there is some income with that, and I actually ran a delta on it, and, and we're, we're pretty close to it. So, some of them that, you know, we have full responsibility to, it's a very good idea, but I actually looked at that one, Commissioner Tobias brought that up a few years ago, so just...
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'm willing to bring it up again. Certainly, anytime anyone wants to discuss turning parks over to cities, yeah, I'm, I'm always willing to do so.
Okay. Item J5.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
This is me again. It's common for private, as well as public organizations, to discount employees and their immediate family for services. This came to my attention due to my daughter, who recently began attending Valencia College, receiving a family discount because of my position as a professor. She gets six credits, I found out, per term, with three terms per year, that's 18 credits. At the current rate, that's about 1,800, a little more than 1,800 dollars a year. My suggestion is that county may wanna look at providing discounted rates for its employees while setting appropriate limits and parameters. Examples of applicable areas may include, but certainly are not limited to, pavilion rentals, campsites, youth activities, and county recreational programs. To be very clear, any discount is, would exclude fines. I think that county employees who don't follow are probably worse than regular offenders. Also, wanna be very clear, this would not be available to commissioners. So, what I'd ask with your indulgence, to make a motion to direct staff to issue a report on implementing a reasonable employee discount plan that excludes commissioners, has necessary parameters, and lays out financial impacts in March, I would hope the 8th, but if later, that would be great, Madam Chair.
So, just bring us back a report?
Absolutely, Madam Chair.
Great. I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias. Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 4-1 with Commissioner Pritchett and the negative. All right, no add-ons? I have Ms. Suzanne Taylor.
I've been dying to see what they, what they're gonna come to present on. They've been sitting here so patiently.
We have been, that's our, our MO. My name is Suzanne Taylor, I'm a member of the Zonta Club of Melbourne, which is a local chapter of an international organization that's been around for more than 100 years. It started in Buffalo, New York. To, our, our intention is to empower women, at its, at its nutshell, at its base. We are here today mostly, I'm, I'm sure you're wondering, you probably did not expect to be talking about the Equal Rights Amendment, or hearing anything about the Equal Rights Amendment when you came in today. I think, and I think my compatriots here agree, and the Zonta Club agree, that we don't do enough talking about issues. We do a lot of arguing with each other, and a lot of yelling and pointing fingers, we don't do enough talking. We're doing our best to get people talking about this issue. I cannot tell you how many people have said to me, "What are you talking about? That passed in the 70s." And it didn't. And so many people don't know it, and unfortunately, so many women do not realize that they don't have equal constitutional rights with men. And it's such a, to me, I can only speak personally, and I just noticed you didn't turn my time on, it might be a good idea, 'cause I, I'm a lawyer, I can talk. I promise you, I can talk. I don't intend to, but I promise you, I, I will lose track of time. And I lost my train of thought by saying it, but I, I think it's important that we be talking about this, because people do not understand what rights they have and what rights they don't have. And women, a lot of people will say, "Women do have equal rights, we have all these laws, we have an equal pay law, and we have this law and that law," but at its very base, we don't have the same constitutional rights that men do, and there's no reason for it that I can hear, that I have heard, that I can think of, and I, trust me, I've thought about it a lot, we've talked about it a lot. I'd love to hear good reasons, or any reasons, why anybody would oppose women having equal constitutional rights with men. In Florida, we have a constitutional that includes women. It makes no sense to me that Florida does not support having equal rights in our federal constitution. Why should I lose my, my equal constitutional rights if I move out of Florida? Only about, and I don't know the number, but it's something like 24 or 25 states have equal rights for women with men in their constitutions. Florida is one of them. It makes no sense why we don't have a federal constitutional amendment as well. So, just quickly, in a nutshell, this issue is, it is in the news, I don't understand why more people aren't talking about it. Very recently, it made a little bit more news. All that has to happen right now is the Senate, well, I, I take that back, as a lawyer, I do know this, there are a lot of lawsuits that are pending. Whatever happens in the near future and the distant future, there will be more lawsuits, probably, those that will have to be gone through. But right now, at a base, what needs to happen is the, the federal senate needs to pass a bill. There are already 51 cosponsors of this bill to extend the ratification date for the Equal Rights Amendment, and put it in the Constitution. It's already passed the House of Representatives a year ago. I don't understand why it's not being brought up, I can't find an answer to that. So, that's, that's my plea, that we talk about this issue more. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to say so. Thank you.
I have no other cards. All right. Can't find my agenda with all these papers, Commissioner Tobias. All right. Now, onto board reports, I almost called you Commissioner, Mr. Batte.
No.
County manager?
I don't have any report, no report.
Abigail?
No report.
Commissioner Pritchett? Commissioner Loebur? Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is one more thing coming up at the next meeting. First of all, I wanna thank Commissioner Smith for taking a deep dive into the issue of towing rates, especially since he's looking out for ratepayers. One of the major concerns being raised is one of enforcing penalties as determined against tow companies when they are violating the law. There are Florida statutes out there. I'm gonna ask for a couple things. Hopefully, this board will get together and provide a, a letter or a memo, letting our state attorney and our sheriff know that we take this stuff extremely seriously. And here's the second part to this, and I'm glad Commissioner Smith brought this issue up, but it's also been brought to my attention about unique fees. So, what I did is spent some time looking at towing rates, as well as all of the fees that are tacked onto that by our neighboring counties. I looked at Seminole, Volusia, Orange, and Polk County, this is the handout you had. And then I looked at the unique fees that were only in Brevard County, and it got me thinking, why do we charge these fees in Brevard County, but not our neighboring counties? And, so I will be bringing forth a new resolution that limits, or does away, let me, let me say, not limits, that does away with the unique fees that are only charged in Brevard County. Those would be the fuel surcharge to facility per mile, the non-tow service call fee, the non-tow service call per mile, the, those are all Class A, Class B, fuel service charge to facility, non-service call fee, the non-service call per mile, and C, it's the same three, and D, it's just the, Class D, it's just the fuel charge to facility. So, again, it's outlined here, I have all of the resolutions for the counties, which I would be more than willing to get the county attorney's office, they were very helpful in putting, helping putting these things together, but I just want you to be aware of the resolution and, and where it came from. Here's the, here's the document that, that supports. There were a couple that we had it, and a single other county did, I did not include that. If the board would like me to look at even more counties, I certainly would do that, but I just don't understand why we have line item fees that other counties don't, so...
What are these, non, non-tow service call fee? What would, how would you get charged that?
If they don't end up telling, they show up, and there's, the car isn't there to tow, or there's some reason not to tow it?
Yeah, I, I'm, yeah, I'm not, I'm, I'm not familiar, and then, on top of that, it looks like they tack on a per-mile fee on top of that, so, you know, these are very, I, I encourage everyone to go out there, I guess, speak with the industry, speak with citizens. Commissioner Smith, it sounds like you've spoken with lots of your constituents on this one, and, just anyway, be aware of the, the, the pink items that are unique and only in Brevard County, those are the ones I will be, I'm, will not be touching the rates, anyway, just limiting the, the ones that, that I've itemized here. So, that, that resolution will be coming at our next meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Commissioner Tobias, this is really good. Did you make this spreadsheet?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I couldn't find a spreadsheet on my computer to save my life.
Someone on your staff did?
Not someone.
Did they wanna come up to District 1?
Bethany, I left did this.
Bethany?
And she made all the, she made all the other ones as well.
This is, this is really good. Sir, I, I like this. Let me ask you this, if we did this, 'cause we haven't really put it into motion yet with, with what we're gonna agree to, maybe they can just make their rates more competitive and absorb those, so they're not doing a per-mile fee. I think this is a really good spreadsheet. Bethany, are you here? Good job, Bethany, and give me a call tomorrow if you're getting tired of him.
Commissioner Loebur?
Just a, a couple things. First, Commissioner Tobias, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, if you don't know, that's totally fine, I, I can find out the same way you can. Do we know when these rates were adopted for the other counties, and whether or not they're indexed?
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, and sorry, Bethany was the one, I, I look at how pretty this was, that's what's very impressive to me. Gabe, as well as the county attorney's office, are the ones that helped with probably the numbers, but I'm, you know, as a male, more intrigued in looks, unfortunately.
A little sexist.
It's true, I'm sorry. Folks, that's bad timing.
Still funny.
Yes. Either way, I'm not looking at indexing anything, because I'm looking at taking a number down to zero. So, indexing was the resolution that Commissioner Smith brought forward, I'm certainly, I'm, I'm certainly willing to look at that. However, mine takes a number and puts it down to zero.
There, there may be instances at which I, I could agree with you on this, but I'm, I'm more curious, and I apologize if I was at all inarticulate in how I phrased the question. For Seminole, Volusia, Orange, and Polk that are included on, on the columns on the far-right most portion of this chart, do we know if those rates have been in place for a year or 20 years, and whether or not they're, they're tied to some scale? 'Cause that's what I'm trying to get at, whether or not it's something where they're in the same position we are, they haven't touched it in a number of years, and they may be considering rate increases themselves, or maybe they automatically go up, 'cause they are indexed.
My staff has done that, but I have no answer for you.
Okay. Yeah, and I guess the only other couple things I would say, if you can send this by PDF, Commissioner Tobias, I would certainly appreciate it, 'cause I, I may wanna work with this too. But with respect to the fees that we have, you may be entirely right that some are inappropriate, but there may be some that are appropriate. I, I can tell you, for instance, water recovery is one that I spoke with one of the folks in the industry about, and we have a lot more water, certainly within the county, than some of our nearby localities do, such that it may make sense to have something allowed for with respect to that here, and it's simply not frequent enough in an adjacent locality where they would, they would even have a concern about it. But, yeah, I, I'm happy to look at all this to determine what, you know, what we can agree on to, to strike, but I, I think there may be some, some wiggle room to remove some things that are inappropriate, and then adjust the rate to make it appropriate. I, I think it may be a, something of a, of a horse trading session coming up on this one.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Tobias?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with water recovery. The resolution I will bring forward won't mention water recovery, it will only mention the, and if you're, you're more than welcome to add whatever you want to it, obviously, once it gets up here for sunshine reasons, but the only ones that I will be bringing forward are the ones that are in pink here.
Okay.
So, I would ask, you know, when you consider the resolution that I will bring forward, it will only be with, it will only be with these that are listed here.
And I'll, I'll just put it out there, Commissioner Tobias, if we're gonna look at striking some of these, I would also want to address the other items that are not in pink at the same time, 'cause I don't, I don't wanna hammer these guys where it may be appro- same time, because I don't want to hammer these guys where it may be appropriate to make adjustments, but meanwhile, it would be appropriate to make adjustments in the other direction on some of the other line items, and I should say the rows in particular, not the columns. I really want to address this all at once, but I don't necessarily disagree that some of these could be adjusted off if they're reflected correctly in the other rates.
At least a little bit. I would agree. I'd rather do it all at once, so there's no confusion, and we don't get them all up twice. I mean, I think it's fair to address, and I think I'm very uncomfortable with what was brought as part of the agenda report before, the nickel-and-diming of all these crazy things. I mean, that, they've got to incorporate the, you know, different profit margins for different jobs. I mean, some, they're going to actually make more profit than other things, but it's impossible, and I don't want residents to get hit with all that stuff, because I've heard horror stories about people not being able to afford to get their car out of storage, because they can't pay the towing fee, because it's, they've got all these extra fees, so I don't want to see that happen. So I like the idea of making it easier and simpler and more in line with the other counties. So I'm good. But I would like to, again, I would like us to address the entire item.
Commissioner Tabia?
What would be the pleasure, if you want to do it all together? This was all that I had prepared. Is there a measure that, you know, Commissioner Smith is the one that initially brought it up? I think...
It's a work in progress, and I, I'll just tell you what we're doing. We're, this opened up a can of worms for me, because I worked with some of these folks and I saw some things that didn't work so well, and I saw some things that I wasn't comfortable with, and so I'm addressing them as much as I can. For example, and I may have mentioned this, we have an ordinance in this county that if you're towed from a parking lot, for example, you were at a play, and you parked someplace you shouldn't have, and you're towed, you have the right to get that car back within an hour of your notifying them. And my office has fielded some calls where people were told they had to wait till the next day. Well, you're very inconvenienced when your car disappears from, and you're not sure why. You don't know if it was stolen, you don't know if it was towed, they don't leave a note behind. So you're like in panic mode, one, and then when you find out it's been towed, now you've got to come up with $200 or $300, or whatever the case may be, and then you're told, "Well, you know what, you're not going to get it today, you're going to get it tomorrow." Or, "How about if it's Friday night, and you're not going to get it till Monday?" Well, that's, we have an ordinance to prevent that, but the people don't know that. So I don't know how we fix that, but at the same time, it's important that we know about this, so that we can do something about it. And some of the things I think would be, and we also have some tow companies that, rotation list, that's a bugaboo of mine, because when I was in the body shop business, one of the things that I considered was buying a tow truck. Because if you tow a car in 99.9% of the time, you're going to get to fix that car. So it's good for business, not to mention the fact you get to tow as well. But it's impossible to get on the rotation list, because being the new guy, you're at the bottom of the list. So if there's a list of 20, now you're number 21. And if they typically only call six to 10 a month, the rotation goes back to one, and I would never get called. So there's no point in my investing that money. So one of the suggestions that I'm going to bring to you folks is that the rotation would change every month. If you were called, then it would go to the next month. And so the people that didn't get called, they would be first up. That's one thing. But we may eliminate that altogether, because in looking at these different counties, we've discovered that Volusia County actually puts their rotation out to bid. In other words, all these things that you're talking about here, the companies would bid what they would charge, one. And two, the county, Volusia County, gets a fee every time that tow company shows up, so that if the fee is like $300, the county would get $100. But that's up to the tow company and their bid. They can say, "For this tow, I'll give you $50." So, and they restrict it to, like, four tow companies per district. So we have a long county, and we already have something in place like that, so we could limit it to four or five tow trucks per area. So I think that would put some order to it, and create some competition, and benefit the county as well. So there's a lot of things that we're working on. I will, I fully intend to bring that to the board, and we can have all these discussions at the same time. But one of the problems I see is that some of the things the municipality, police force, or the deputy at the scene is responsible for, well, I can tell you that they're not interested in cleanup, for example. It's one of my bugaboos, because I constantly see accident scenes that aren't cleaned up properly. In fact, two weeks ago, we had one right at the corner of my street, at US 1 and my street. The tow truck left, the cop left, and there's a bumper sitting there, a whole bumper sitting there. There's a headlight there, the bumper at least was on the side of the road. The headlight was in the travel lane. There was part of a mirror in the travel lane, and I'm thinking, "What is this guy doing? But he's, he's an hourly employee, and if nobody's holding him responsible, he's going to be as diligent as he wants to be, or not as diligent." And I can tell you, the sheriff and these other chiefs, they don't want to enforce this. So I've come up with an idea that I think would work to be self-enforcing. For example, if we held, if you or I see a scene that isn't cleaned up, or junk queue public, if they report that to us, and we can verify it to be fact, we could take that company off the rotation, for example, for three months. That would be self-enforcing, because that guy, if he owns that company, he's going to make sure his hourly employees are cleaning that thing up to be spotless, because he doesn't want to be off the rotation for three months, and we don't have to worry about it. And the fact is, he might have 20 scenes that are never cleaned up, but nobody reports it. But when somebody does, okay? So I don't think he, if he knows that's the penalty, I don't think he's going to have 20 scenes. So those are just some of the ideas, and I will bring, we're going to put all this together for you guys, and then you guys can make a decision how you want to do it.
Yeah, Commissioner Tabia, you gave me a spreadsheet. So what I, I like getting rid of the charges we don't have, and then doing like what's kind of a modified lower cost-to-market thing here. I think if we took the next lowest county and changed our rates to those, because we're getting rid of those, that way we'll be at the lowest county, what other counties are charging, so we'll be able to adjust our rates and get rid of those ones that fluctuate, that are a little bit more variable. I think that will be fair. So I'm in for that.
Well, if we put them out for bid, these numbers don't even have any bearing.
That's true, too. So whatever you want to do, but it looks like...
We just give them the classifications we want bids on, and then they bid.
Yeah, they're all pretty, they're all pretty close in their numbers here, though. So I imagine our bids are going to come in not too far off, sir. So whatever you want to do with that, I'm good, but I think we should get rid of the charges that nobody else does. I think that's good. And then change ours to the lower of the other counties, so.
Okay, Commissioner Loeb? And we can keep going in circles, and this isn't directed at you, but just, we should probably save most of this discussion for when we actually have the item and proposals.
Last little bit I'll add to it is, I would just offer a word of caution in terms of relying entirely on the bid process. I don't know this to be the case, but it's possible that other entities rely on the county adopting a resolution that sets rates in order to set their own rates, and if that's the case, if we don't have a resolution that addresses that, we may actually cause some unintended consequences. So even if we want to put it out to bid, we may want to do this anyway.
You incorporate.
Yeah, it's just something I would suggest folks be mindful of when we move forward.
Okay. All right, did you have anything else?
Nope, no, Madam Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
That's it.
All right, and I have nothing to report. Thank you, everybody, for hanging in. Thank you, staff. Have a good night.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability